I'd like to open a meeting for the planning board, meeting for July 26th, 2021. Members present to my left is Ken Buckman, our town planner. Planning board member, Mike King.
Carl.
Carl?
Schultz.
Schultz. We got, uh... Oh, man. Mr. Corbett. And Mr. Swenson and Charlie Rowley over there, and myself, Mike Baptiste. First order of business, call the meeting order, we did that, roll call we had. Approve the minutes for September 14th, 2020. Uh, September 21st and November 30th, 2020. Everybody have a chance to read through the minutes and, uh... I did.
I'd move to approve the September 14th, 2020, September 21st, 2020, and November 30th, 2020, meeting minutes.
Second? Most been made and seconded to approve the minutes for the 14th, 21st, and November 30th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Four, four, zero, one. Done deal. Preliminary business, reorganization of the planning board. Positions and appointments. Entertain a motion for, we have a position for a chair, and a vice chair up for renewal.
You're going to do them both at the same time or individual?
We're doing both at the same time.
Well, I move to appoint, um, Richard Swenson as, uh, planning board chair.
Second? Got a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Vice chair?
I make a motion that we appoint Michael King, vice chair.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Appoint Mike King as vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote is five, zero. And gentlemen, you have new, a new chair and a new vice chair. Capital Projects, community preservation and SERPED. We'll need representatives for that.
There's one other one as well, um, former chairman, um, for the solar bylaw committee. We need an appointment for that as well.
So, we're going to take it as a volunteer or we're gonna?
Are we gonna?
Put bring somebody into this one?
Um, you want to take these one at a time?
I think so.
Um, I have, regarding the solar bylaw committee spot, I had, uh, made an effort, uh, through the selectmen to ask them to consider two planning board members on that, uh, committee, and, um, that was not taken up, so right now we only have one spot. And I think that, I'm not done with that. There may be opportunity in the future to get another spot on there, but we'll see. But right now, we have one.
Just one.
And I do know there are multiple people, um, on this, uh, planning board that have showed interest, so I'm not sure what we're going to do there.
I think people can show up at the meetings as well, too, and listen in. Get, 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 um, prepared for what comes up. Because it'll come to the planning board eventually anyway, for a public hearing and , uh, review process.
I think that sounds like a good deal.
So, um, I'm just, let's have a discussion. I know Carl and Sam had, have, um, indicated that there was some interest there. Um, I don't know how to move forward. You mean, you guys want to talk it over? You want to?
Do you want to continue? You want, because you've already been involved.
I do not want to continue on the, no. I would, I, I've done enough on that, and I would like to have new blood come in and do it.
Is that what you're specifically interested in?
Don't forget to use your mic, gentlemen.
They having a arm wrestling contest for us?
Take it.
If you're interested.
I'm, I'm interested in the solar bylaw.
Okay, I'm okay, I'm good with that.
Make a motion that the planning board appoint Carl Schultz as a member of the, uh, solar bylaw committee representing the planning board.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is, uh, community preservation. Uh, I believe Sam Corbett would be a, a good, a, a good candidate for that slot. Uh, I'd make a motion to reappoint Sam Corbett as community preservation representative. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. SERPED.
It's, it's not a demanding spot. I, I will continue if there's nobody else that's interested in doing.
Sounds good. Uh, when you guys, okay, officially, you guys can take over from now. There's your new positions. Right?
They're, it's, it's done. They're, they're in place now. So, you're taking over as chairman now, right now?
Richard, you're in. Right now?
You're the chair.
You just got elected, you're in it.
Okay, I'm in. So, we've done chairman, we've done vice chairman, we have still open clerk, capital projects, SERPED. You were just discussing, discussing SERPED?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Michael, you indicated it's not a, not a large workload, but I do believe that you've got to rotate out?
No.
No, you can stay on?
Yes.
You interested?
Yeah, I'll, I'll continue to represent the board.
Okay, so, I'd entertain a motion to have Michael King nominated for the SERPED rep?
I moved that Michael King would be our SERPED rep.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay.
Close payments.
Pardon me?
About capital projects.
Yeah, we'll get there. Clerk? I have to be honest, I didn't know we had a clerk. So...
I didn't even know the position existed until I was told I was it.
Um, hold on, let me write this down.
Do we need it?
I don't know. Do we, do, is it?
It's, it's not a very demanding position. You don't need it necessarily.
Do we have to have it?
Yeah.
No, you don't.
So, I would entertain a motion that we, um, skip over this for now, until we have a time or a place where we need a clerk?
Yep.
Uh, well, one of the things I want you to do is decide on who signs the, uh, the plans and documents. Is it the full board or a quorum of the board, or is it, uh, as before, just the chairman of the board that signs the, the documents that are filed on the land records? Because we're going to have to notify the registry of deeds as to what protocol we're using.
Uh, that, I think that would, uh, warrant a little discussion by the board, so let's, uh, close out on the clerk position.
So, I move that we leave the clerk position open to the town game until such time as the need is established?
A second?
Moving second to...
Where'd you say, Kyle?
Light's not on.
I have a motion to leave the clerk position open and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's done. Capital Projects, I was the rep for Capital Projects. The last year, I was told that, um, I cannot do it again, that it has to rotate out. Um, I'm not sure why, but we're, I'm going to assume that's true. Um, I attended, I was the rep, I attended, I'm going to say, five meetings. I consider it an oversight, uh, role, along with a member of the finance committee and other government leaders. I got to hear, um, presentations of major capital expenses that were being proposed, um, and the budget that was presented at the town meeting by our town administrator, uh, rolled up all that capital stuff. It, um, it was much more of transparency to the community and, and our government about what's going on to make sure everyone could see it. There wasn't a lot of debate, uh, there wasn't a lot of, uh, probing questions, but there was some at times, so... Is that a decision-making position, a voting position? We did have votes and, and, um, but for the most part, it was to say okay. So, pardon me?
I'm good with that.
All right, so, um, Sam has volunteered. Michael, we're leaving you out in the cold, and you've got a big smile on your face.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I've been around here a long time.
I'd entertain a motion to, uh, have Sam Corbett appointed to the capital planning committee?
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, moved. I think that is the end of our positions.
Did we do community preservation?
Yeah, Sam Corbett.
Yes, Sam got that, too.
I missed that. We did that early. Okay.
So, as a result, Swenson's chair, Mike King is vice chair, Carl is on the solar bylaw, community preservation is Sam Corbett, SERPED is Mike King, clerk is open, and CPC is Sam. Okay? All right. Uh, next on the agenda under preliminary business is a discussion, presentation of a possible subdivision at 532 Main Street for an additional lot to build a multiple family dwelling. I'm assuming this is a process step, uh, prior to a preliminary plan? Just, um, an informal process to get initial feedback from this board?
That's correct. They, uh, they, they had actually approached me with the idea that this was an A and R, and I said it was probably appropriate that the planning board have a review of it to determine whether or not it was an A and R or a subdivision, but they'd have to approach with their board.
All right, so there isn't, there is no public hearing tonight. This is just an initial, uh, overview of what's being thought about and talked about and to gather some feedback. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
My name is Frank Westgate, all of you know me, I'm sure. And, uh, this is the, I'm John Zappal, the owner of the property.
Need a mic.
You, you gotta be at a mic when you're talking. If you want to move the easel up, feel free.
Watching, behind it.
I get it, I get it. Put it in here so we can see it. That's good. All right, every, yeah, okay. I'm Mike.
And I'm John Zappal, the owner of the property.
And did you get that? I'm Frank Westgate, I'm the surveyor and the engineer on this project. What we're asking for is a slight waiver here. It's a Form A plan. We've got the square footage for the two lots. There's an existing duplex right here. We proposed one more duplex. And the required frontage, the required frontage is 200 feet. Uh, we have the 200 on Main Street, just about. And we're asking if the board will allow us to use that right of way for the additional 200 feet of frontage, so that we can have two legal lots. That's what this is all about. And in return, we're going to convey this piece here to the town. This is all conservation land, it's a, it's a subdivision in here, and the town owns most of it. And so, we'll give that to the town. And so, what we need is some kind of an answer before we go forward with a, with a formal Form A and a submission.
So, the right of way that we're, we're asking for to use as frontage services two houses, both with a Main Street address out back. So, the only access of the two houses out back that have been there since the 1920s or 30s, they, they have no frontage on Main Street, but they have a Main Street address, but they use the right of way over my land to access the two houses out back. The two houses are not shown on the plan? Uh, this is Main Street, if anybody can think about where the train bridge is, right, um, uh, Main Street over, does the overpass, uh, over the train bridge. There were two houses out back here that are serviced by the right of way, uh, on my property. So, I'm looking to use the frontage on the existing right of way that's been being used at least since the 1940s or 1950s servicing the houses out back as the legal frontage for the, for the second lot. There's approximately 2.7 acres of land here. Uh, two family dwellings require 45,000 square feet with 200 feet of frontage. We have enough frontage to separate the existing two-family house, and what I'm looking for is to use the existing right of way as the frontage for the, the second parcel.
And where were?
In which would give you roughly a half acre of land, stretching all the way down to the, the Stony Brook. So, we'd keep away from that. I don't need that land, and it gives me enough land for both two family dwellings.
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else. Where, where are the two houses that have the Main Street address?
The roughly... I got it, I got it, Charlie. There's one here, and the other one's right here. Okay, and there's a driveway runs between, all right, go here and here. And that existing, that existing driveway varies between 10 and 12 feet in width, and part of it, a portion of it is paved, and we don't mind widening it or paving it if the board feels that that would make them more comfortable in, in dosing a Form A plan. Right, Charlie?
That is correct.
Anybody, anybody on this board have any experience with using right of way as frontage?
This has been done before, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, makes this, uh, unique is there's a driveway as is and not an easement. And it, it would require, I believe, the creation of a subdivision plan to show the, the right of way as providing frontage for the lots.
Let me say that back to you. Can't have frontage on a driveway, but you can have frontage on a street, and if they were, uh, willing to upgrade that driveway to street, to street level quality, they've just kicked in the subdivision by law.
Exactly, and I think what they do is they ask for waivers for, uh, construction if you find that they don't have to do the full boat, uh, construction of the subdivision road, but that's based on the actual, uh, use of the road and the right of way.
Well, we certainly don't want to pave it to 24 feet and put in sidewalks and all that sort of thing. We recommend a 16-foot, and I think 16-foot is the minimum by the Highway Society, isn't it, Charlie? For a two-way road?
Subdivision rules and regulations say 18 feet is the minimum, but you can waive that at your discretion, uh, depending on circumstances, so...
Charlie, do you have any experience in your role as town engineer on right of way as frontage?
So long as, uh, so long as this gentleman owns it, uh, I assume it's subject to the rights of others to pass a repass.
It is.
But you own that?
I do own, yes, yes.
Then I think what's, uh, Ken has already advised is probably the correct way to go. Um, and then file it as a subdivision plan, uh, make your recommendation as to what the construction improvements would be, waive whatever outstanding items in that that you feel aren't necessary, and just, uh, do it as a subdivision, that clears up everything. And, uh, I, I think that's the way to go.
No way, no, um, you would advise against doing a Form A or an A and R?
Well, Form A is not, uh, acceptable unless you find that is, in its current condition is okay. So, you'd have to go out and visit it. But if all it is is a driveway and it's 10 to 12 feet, you're going to have to make a decision as to whether that's adequate. If you say no, then the only option is to come in with a subdivision, which, um, has already been recommended.
One, one of the ratholes in that one, Richard, let me interject here, Charlie, is you can't condition a Form A. You know, we can sit here and make gentleman's agreements all day long, and they don't pour water. So, if you go as a subdivision and you waiver what they, you know, what they don't have to do to make it legal, that's the, that's the clean way to do it.
Have you, and do you have experience with that?
Done that in the past, yes.
A subdivision with a waiver to, uh, as to the road?
Yeah, reduce the requirements for the, for the roadway.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to be paved, it doesn't have to have drainage.
Doesn't have to have lighting.
Street, tree sidewalks, and et cetera.
It should be up to the applicant to, when he does his application, to give you a list of the waivers that he wants you to consider. And you either vote each one up or down, and, uh, then you end up with a final plan that you both agree to, and, uh, then you go from there.
You're talking, uh, an actual Form C application, right? The whole, the whole works?
Yeah, with the understanding that, uh, it may not have to include all of the requirements that are in the subdivision rules and regs. So long as you identify which ones you're requesting a waiver on, make that a part of your application, so you can consider it.
I get it. Michael, just to be clear, what you just said on a Form A, there is no, you can't have any conditions. A Form A is a Form A.
Right.
Plain and simple. It either meets the criteria or not. I, I, I get it. Yep, yep. You know, like, say, say for instance, uh, let's, let's talk a little abstractly. If, uh, Mr. Westgate come in and says, okay, we're going to do a Form A, and, uh, I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to do that, and I want to do this. We can agree on that, and it doesn't pour water. You can't condition a Form A.
I hear you.
Any other comments or questions from the board at this point? Seems to me that the general feeling of this board is that a subdivision plan submitted on a Form C with a list of, uh, requested waivers is the appropriate next step.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not hearing anyone that's, um, any violent objection to what you're proposing. I think we just want to do it legally and properly for your interest and ours.
Yep, yep. I think we're good. Yep, yep.
Anything else?
No, sounds good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, under preliminary business number three, enforcement of the site plan special permit at Master Millworks, 55 Charlotte Furnace Road, on paving and landscaping. Um, Charlie, I'll turn to you. Have you heard anything?
I've heard absolutely nothing.
Um, given that the enforcement officer, as we've discussed in the past, is the building inspector, the building commissioner, um, one of the things I've been thinking about is that we should, uh, formally request an update from him on that. He was the person that put in the stop, wasn't he?
Uh, he, I'm not sure what the status of that is, but...
He, he didn't put in a stop, all he did was not grant the building permit yet. Thank you.
I mean, this...
That's my understanding.
That's correct. He, he was waiting for a report from me, my office, as to what the planning board wanted, and, uh, held the building permit until you make a decision.
Yeah, I, I think this is still, um, up to you as a board, because at the time that, um, Master Millworks came in, they said that they would have certain tests done. I went out and observed the tests. I think they should be inquired.
You haven't seen, no, no results?
I have no idea what the results are. Um, I assume that the, uh, testing lab that did the work that I observed, uh, took that documentation back and did what they said they were going to under the contract they had with Master Millworks. But, uh, that project is still under your purview, and you can certainly inquire as to where the information is. Because the pavement that's out there, um, unless that modification was actually submitted and put into the Plymouth County Registry, uh, the project's still in violation, because it would require five inches of mix and not four. So, it's still in your works.
Still waiting for a, a, uh, vegeta, it's not the right...
Yeah, landscape plan?
Landscape plan.
Yes, you had requested that, and they said they would provide it, and we haven't seen anything.
And you went out to look at the drainage culvert in the back?
I did.
And there was some questions about that?
That's correct.
And we have not heard anything?
No, uh, the contractor asked me one day what he could do. I said, you can do one of two things. You can pull it all out and rebuild it the way you're supposed to, or you can talk with the engineer and get him to write a letter to the planning board saying that what you did is okay. Um, I've heard nothing.
Okay, so, um, let me ask this to anyone who might have an answer. We need to, uh, inquire to Master Millworks as to the status of their core tests they've done, the landscaping, the lack of an updated landscaping plan, and the rear drainage issue that Charlie's pointed out. I'm not, is that something this board should write? Is it something the planning department should write? Is it something the building commissioner write? Is it something our town engineer should write?
Uh, I've already contacted Master Millworks regarding that information, and, uh, they said they have not received a report from the, uh, the soil testing as yet, so they haven't submitted it to our review. Uh, the landscape plan is in process. I've had a discussion with GAF on the, uh, plan that's going to be modified, and they, uh, they're, uh, in process on that as well. Uh, so, everything seems to be in process. There isn't anything that has been definitively made as a submission or, uh, proposal.
My main concern is that they understand what we're waiting to see, and I, that the building commissioner is waiting to see.
Yeah, and it's quite clear.
Okay, good.
So, are, are they at a stop right now, waiting on this information to get to us?
Yeah, they're at a stop right now, based on the, uh, what the building commissioner has done.
Have, have you been out to the site recently? I haven't been out there.
No, I haven't.
I was out, mm, a week ago, maybe 10 days.
All that steel still laying on the parking lot?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, the, the, um, there was another action that was being, that was taking place. Uh, there was a complaint on the, uh, hours of operation, and, um, the building commissioner was, uh, reviewing with them what their, their schedule of construction, of, uh, work was at the, uh, location. Because there was, uh, apparently a midnight, uh, work at midnight, and, uh, that was outside the, the bounds of the, of the noise, uh, operations requirements.
Well, if they don't have a building permit, what kind of work would they be doing?
They have an existing building. They have, they have an existing operation there already.
Maintenance on the existing building?
Not a maintenance, actually, they're, they have an operation going on right now. They're production of...
Oh, oh, production, outside of the...
Of millwork that they're doing right now.
And a lot of the conditions, the original conditions on the original building, they violated every one there is. Uh, doors are open constantly. Uh, doors weren't supposed to be left open during the working hours. Uh, hours of operation is, phew, is through the roof.
Right, exactly. And that was what, one of the reasons why they were trying to expand, so they could increase the number of workstations and, uh, keep up with the work that they've got going for them right now in contracts.
So, I would propose that this board continue to use you as a conduit into Master Millworks on...
That's fine.
All right? Any other comments or questions?
So, we're still involved.
Okay, close that. Moving on, Winship Avenue, enforcement of special permit regarding land cover.
Uh, nothing to report on that. Um, the situation is the same as it was before.
So, I will say, I will repeat what I suggested before as a possible step we could take, and that is for this board to formally request an update from the building commissioner.
I would agree with that.
Have you been by lately? Are the mounds still there? The last time I went out, the mounds had not been spread. 10 days ago, I was there, and there's, and they had not been spread.
Well, weeds are growing up on the top, they look pretty nice.
Well, they're not really doing anything out there at all.
They'll then go back to nature.
I, I think he's probably going to use the, the time of year as a the excuse.
He did that last time.
I understand that, but, you know, a good excuse is worth using twice.
It worked.
He's gonna, he, he, I'm sure he's gonna offer up the fact that you can't grow new grass in August.
I, I think what he's offering is that he has already done the work on the site that is required by the special permit.
So, um, we're going to request a formal update from our building commissioner, should that come from me as chair, from you as planning director? I'm happy to, to write a, a note.
I'll, I'll, I'll check in with him.
Will ya?
Yeah.
Okay, and I want to note that he has... Please don't you do it. If we send him a letter, he has 14 days to respond, either in writing that he's going to take an action, or he's not going to take an action. He cannot ignore us. He has to respond. If we send a letter, that's the law.
That's, that is correct. I, I don't think you want an adversarial relationship with the building commissioner, though. I think what you want is a cooperative relationship.
Already started that, huh?
Well, I, we, we, I, I...
I'm not trying to be adversarial, but...
I, I partially agree with, with Carl. I, I partially agree with, with Carl. I, I think the, the amount of cooperation that we've received from him in the past has been less than stellar and that if he could improve on his side, I'd be more than happy to improve on my side.
Well, then, the correspondence does have to be responded to in fourteen days, so we can make that clear to him as well.
Do you wanna do it inform- are you recommending that we do an informal discussion?
No, I think it has to be formal at this point.
So, just a, a, anything that we ask him to act on, we just include that, you know, we are expecting a response within fourteen days.
I'm not trying to be adversarial, but, but we don't, we don't seem to know what's going on.
All right, see if we can clarify that then.
I mean, if he's, if he's been out to Master Millwork, I've heard zero. I, I don't, I don't know what he's discovered, not discovered.
I think one of the things this board might wanna consider formalizing is the enforcement process as we look forward and, but some things we wanna do. It's on my list of things to talk about because right now it's a little vague.
Yep.
But, uh, I would entertain a motion for this board to authorize our town planner, Ken Buckland, to request a formal status on the enforcement of the special permit at Winship Avenue.
I would second that.
I think you wanna so moved that?
So moved.
Now we need a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, um, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. I will ask for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Pass is five zero zero. Mr. Buckland, that, can that go out this week, you think?
Yeah, it'll go out tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
And I apologize. I wasn't trying to sound adversarial.
Well, I think it's important, important, you know, you and I've talked a lot about MGL and, and, um, what it all means and what's in there and some of the nuances and there are some nuances we need to be aware of.
Mm-hmm.
Like they, the twenty-one days on A and R is critical. The fourteen days on this letter is critical, so... Okay, um, moving on to continued public hearings.
Uh, no, you have one more. You have A and R.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, we have twenty-eight dash twenty-one A and R Jerry Smith, High Street and Church Avenue moving existing lot lines.
Good evening. Thank you, Brian Grady with GAF Engineering.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Uh, what you have before you is an A and R plan, uh, making a slight change. These three lots are in common ownership. Uh, the larger piece on the High Street side, you may all be familiar with it, uh, the former dental office with a residential unit in front. Uh, it's been abandoned for a little while now, so we're just moving that rear property line a little bit further away from the structure, uh, to get, uh, some compliance, some setback compliance with, with the structure. Uh, and the, the two vacant lots on Church Avenue, uh, we're exploring the development potential for that property at this time.
This is, this is the former lot line and, and a light line here, dash line, and they're moving the line further away from the existing building so that these two, two lots are smaller than previously by this distance here.
What do, uh, Brian, if I may, what, what problem are you trying to solve here?
Well, they're exploring the development potential for the property as a whole. Uh, moving the lot line gives us setback conformance for the structure, the structure that exists. Um, that's the principal issue and then the, uh, the Church Avenue property, um, will be developed as to whatever's allowed under zoning. This is the Wairham Village. This is, uh, the Wairham Village Two Zone.
Is it fair to say that the rear lot line as it currently stands today is in violation of setback?
It's not in violation of setback. It's a pre-existing non-conforming situation. Violations are created by the, by the landowner. Um, pre-existing non-conforming is created by zoning.
Mr. King, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mr. Baptiste?
Well, I guess at this time I, I can't really ask what's the intention of the two dwellings on the front lot. They're gonna stay the way they are. Take it.
Yeah, they've been abandoned for a while. They're being evaluated, seeing what condition they're in.
Okay, that's good. Almost out.
Sixty-seven. What's, what are the frontage requirements in this zone?
Frontage is seventy-five feet.
Okay, so, and it meets, it'll meet that, it'll meet that requirement?
Frontage is seventy-five and fifteen thousand is the, uh, lot area requirement.
And it meets both those requirements?
It, they won't...
Well, the, the, the two smaller ones do not. Combined, they do, but as separate lots, they are not conforming to the, this, the area requirements.
So, that would have to go before Board of Appeals for, uh, variance, right?
That's right.
I'm sorry, Michael, what did you say?
I said that would have to go for a variance for them two lots in the back to make them, uh, buildable the way they sit right now.
Well, unless they were combined and then there'd be a conforming lot.
So, let's be clear. Right now, there are three lots and we're just moving the line ten feet back. The, these two lots are already there, non-conforming. They're empty, right?
They're vacant, correct.
Carl, you have any, I mean, I have a comment. I'll skip ahead. One of the things I've learned in the last few months is that I would like very much for non-buildable lots to be labeled as such and generally that's the case. Would there be an issue with labeling twenty-three B and twenty-three C as non-buildable under the current, um, under the current proposal?
Well, th- they're non-conforming. They're joined as far as zoning is concerned.
I don't know what that means.
Well, they're under common ownership, so they're joined to make an application before zoning.
You'd have to come back to take this line out, right? Or adjust it?
It, it could remain. Um, you know, duplex isn't allowed use in the zone. You can apply for a special permit to separate the duplex, uh, to have two principal dwellings on a lot, um, and this being a lot with the, the two of them combined for zoning purposes.
Okay.
So...
Sam?
Good.
We're not, by approving this, we're not saying that it's buildable.
Are all the traditional...
No, you're not.
Yeah, we have the note on there. Yes.
Yeah, all the traditional non-endorsements are there?
Regulations, correct.
Any other comments or questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve this A and R, um, excuse me, A and R twenty-eight dash twenty-one for Jerry Smith at High Street and Church Avenue moving existing lot lines.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Pass is five zero zero.
I could ask you to sign the MWR as well now too, and I think you all have to sign it until we have the, the record at the county registry of deeds saying otherwise. Use that pen.
Probably all sign it, which...
Hmm?
Should probably all sign it if George was the only one that could sign it before.
That's okay.
True.
Yeah. Charlie, I should've turned to you and asked you for comments. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Probably want to send one for a file.
Pardon me?
We do need a clerk.
Probably send one and send a paper one for a file.
The clerk? Yeah. And a clerk, it says.
Eighty-one A?
Yep. You need a paper one. Doesn't say anything about a vice clerk.
Sign it right there.
Kick me under the table.
All right. Can't reach it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Check the glasses.
Just for the record, that's all. Yep, well, 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 just for the... A paper file.
You can give that to, to Brian.
Don't forget to date it.
Oh, do you have, did we put a date on it?
Brian, you got a copy for the file? Give them one of those to sign for the file, eh? There's, there's, there's right there. Like, there's a couple right, right there.
Yeah.
Make sure they sign one for the files.
What do you, we should...
Just sign it for the file.
We got a paper copy coming down with signatures on it now.
Everybody...
I got two.
We need to sign this one too. This is for him.
Yep, closing the file.
Engineer, process expert, and citizen, right?
Yep, both of them.
That's for, that's the applicant's copy.
No, that's for the...
That's for our records.
That's for our, for the file.
Sorry?
I think they already started that. Okay.
Those are also bad.
All we need is one for our records, for paper. Back to Ken?
Hmm?
Back to Ken?
Yeah. Okay, continued public hearings. Um, first one we're gonna do is twenty-three dash twenty-one modification to a special use permit, site plan approval, and definitive subdivision plan for Baypoint Club. Um, for the public, um, I think this is our second, um, session here. Um, the, uh, our town engineer is working closely with the applicant on a change they're making to an approved, I believe it's three, a special permit for the CR district, a special permit, uh, in gen- uh, for site plan and a subdivision. There's three, uh, formal documents here that we're doing a modification to. Um, as I said, this is our second, um, session of the public hearing. Um, our town engineer has been working closely with the applicant and there's been dialogue back and forth, many, much, most of it very, very technical, that I personally lean on Mr. Rowley to drive for me. Um, the way I'd like to do this is I'd like the applicant to update the board as to where you are in, in this process, give the board an opportunity to ask and get que- answers to any questions they may have. Then I would open up the, um, the public hearing for our public members to participate and provide feedback and at that point, we'll do that. Um, one of the things I'd like to do with the board's approval, I'd like to limit, um, input to three minutes, with the opportunity to grant extended time if I feel appropriate, um, and, and also to make sure that we're not covering duplicate, uh, material over and over. So, with that, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank...
Uh, I'm sorry.
Put the back where they were.
Can we move the easel over there?
Put the easel back where it was.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Chris Reynolds and Tim Fay from Baypoint Country Club. As, as you mentioned, we came back in front of you a month ago, uh, to go over our modifications to our plan. Again, this was a previously approved plan in June of two thousand nineteen. We come back, not changing the number of units, decreasing the overall roadway, decreasing the overall development size. Um, at the meeting last time, we gave a presentation of the modifications. At that point, Mr. Rowley had not been able to review the plans yet. Uh, since that meeting, um, Charlie was able to get us, uh, very quickly the comments on those plans. My engineer reviewed the plans, updated the plans with Mr. Rowley's comments. We went and sat down with Mr. Rowley again, reviewed all my engineer's responses with a new set of drawings. At this point, a couple of days ago, uh, Charlie sent another round of comments and based upon the revisions, I think, not to speak for Charlie, of course, but I think we've settled on a lot of the major issues at least and now we're kinda getting down to the, some of the technical, uh, details with some of the contours and gradings and some of the other, um, engineering specific items to it. And that's kinda where we are. My engineer will be, uh, doing another set of revisions based on Mr. Rowley's comments. I don't think there was anything of, we're contesting or any issues to it. Um, it was really more on details at this point. That's kinda where we are.
Yes, sir.
So, the letter I have from Mr. Rowley is dated July twenty-fourth. This is, is the only letter that I have from Mr. Rowley.
There's another one of July sixth as well.
Oh, okay, but I'm sorry, the last one.
Yes.
Thank you, good friend. So, the plans that we're looking at, are those modified since Mr. Rowley's comments of July twenty-fourth? Are these plans before Mr. Rowley's comments?
So, the, the, the comm- the original time when I presented and his original comment letter, um, we updated the plans. So, you have a new from the July sixth to the, to the current July twenty-fourth comment letter. So, what it was, we sent a new set of plans to you, which you have eleven by seventeen since the last meeting, and Charlie reviewed those plans and that's what those, that his July twenty-fourth letter corresponds. We have not revised the letters, we have not revised the plan since July twenty-fourth.
That's so.
Yep, so you have the latest set of plans, which refers back to Mr. Rowley's comments of the twenty-fourth.
The plan date is July fourteenth. That's the latest plan date.
From Prince of V.
July twenty-second is the plan they were showing here on the screen.
I beg your pardon, you're right.
And is your comments from after are made on that plan set?
They are, this is the set that I received last Thursday, which should have the latest date.
And we believe that to be the twenty-second, which prompted a response from you dated the twenty-fourth.
Now, these plans say revised July fourteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Fourteen, that's, I'm sorry, that's right.
So, as far as I can determine, your latest set of comment...
As far as I can determine, your latest set of comments have not been addressed in a plan set.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
We agree.
For the public's, um, I, I just wanna, I wanna be clear that the public understands the scope of what we're doing here, uh, if that's all right. Or, Chris, could you, would you mind, um, just pointing out, using the, what's up on the screen there, that you're, this is phase two and phase three. You're modif- you're removing a road and straightening a road and changing the architecture just a tad. And I want, I want our public to understand the scope of what we're doing here. This is a modification to an existing approved plan.
So, this was the previously approved plan. The lot line is in green. The roadway is in, in orange. Um, you can see the little finger out to here. You can see the overall size of the development. Graphically, you can see the changes that we're making. We're decreasing this finger to the top of the, top of the site. We're decreasing the overall roadway length, which is in orange. Um, so, it's less overall development between the two plans. It's less overall roadway. It's the same number of units. Previously in July nineteen, uh, July nineteen, fifty-six units are approved. To accommodate this revised layout, we have a different configuration. Originally, we had fifty single families and six, and, uh, three duplex buildings, six units. Now, we have, um, sixteen single families, sixteen duplexes, and one eightplex. And that's the major differences. You can kinda see it graphically.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll turn to the board. If you all don't mind, I'll start. Is that okay? My comments are, I've been through Charlie's, uh, document. I'm pleased to hear that the dialogue is going well with Chris and his engineer. I have no problems with this change. I'm just go- I mean, I am gonna turn to you, Charlie, for the, for the technical... just, I mean, I am gonna turn to you, Charlie, for the, for the technical correctness and proficiency of what we're trying to do here. I'm not smart enough to do it, so, at some point after the board talks, I would ask you for your comments and feedback. Sam, do you have any?
Pardon me?
Let me do that in reverse.
That's fine. You wanna start, would you mind?
No.
Please.
Majority of the comments that are in my letter are technical in terms of details of the, of the plan itself, that can be worked out between Mr. Princey V., who's the engineer of record for the plan, and Waterman, who is the surveyor of record of the plan. So, those details, I don't think that we need to address here, that we can take care of those, and they're not issues that can't be addressed at some point in time. However, there are some things in here which I think the board needs to be aware of, and I would encourage the board to have dialogue with Tom and with Chris about those, and basically it's at the bottom of the site plan notations on sheet one. They did not include in this particular plan set landscape plans for each of the units the way that they did in phase one. So, my question would be, as I put in there, are these features that they proposed for phases two and three the same generalized features that were shown on those landscape plans for phase one? If they were, then I think the simple thing would be to provide a copy of the plans, update the plans, and label them for phases two and three, so that become a part of a matter of the record for phases two and three. That's, that's all I'm suggesting. If there's anything other than that, then, Tim, I'm looking to you.
So, our landscape concepts have, we submitted originally in phase one, we supplemented that with administrative review from Mr. Buckland, and I thought that the landscape inside of the program, it certainly will be similar and consistent as it was in phase one, administered administratively by Mr. Buckland. So, that was the thought, that was the intention, and we'll do that in detail once this plan is approved, so that we go through the site development with the duplexes and the single-family homes and the location that they're going to be, submitting the same type of detail that we did in phase one.
Okay, the, the only concern I have with that would be that, one, two, three, four of the members of the board were not a part of phase one discussion, so they have no idea what the landscaping plans look like.
Yep.
So, it, I think it would be fair to them, and I'm just speaking for myself, if they had an opportunity to see what those landscape plans included, because we are talking about phases two and three, generally speaking, with a modification. Not suggesting they need to be changed, but I think in all fairness to this board, they need to see what they were.
So, that's a function of the board, and we thought administratively that it would be the same as it was in phase one, with Mr. Buckland administering the approval of the final landscape plans based on the final outline and location of the homes.
That, that's the first thing. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Chris?
Yeah, and we can, we can, for the record, submit the, the phase one landscape plans, 'cause they're the same home designs, the same kind of features, and use that as our basis for phase two, so this way there's something in the record. Obviously, that record still would maintain, 'cause all of the previous approvals still holds, but we could submit that as the basis of what phase two landscaping will be.
That would be my recommendation, that you submit them to the board, so that they can have a chance to see what they haven't been able to see so far.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see them.
The second thing had to do with an issue that I didn't put in my first review, and had to do with the mailboxes. There was a area set aside in phase one, sort of after the approval, where they created a space for mailboxes for phase one. You've got as many, well, you've got much more unit distribution here than you had at phase one, and there's no indication as to where those mailboxes would be, so I'm just suggesting that they incorporate something at some point, so they know where it is. Mainly the other, oh, the other, the only other thing was that they showed in the plan set a division between phases two and three on the plans, but they're shown on just the outline of the lots in question, without any location with respect to the buildings. When I tried to plot one of the lines for the phase division, it seemed to run through a building. So, I, I think it would be appropriate to show those phase lines on the detailed plans of where the buildings are, so you don't have a question about that as to where they are. It's a simple thing to put on the plan, and it doesn't affect the, the phasing of it at all, just for clarity purposes. Drainage calculations we're, we're comfortable with, we did discuss it because of the runoff characteristics of the site and the underlying soil, but we reached a, an agreement that the internal sides of both the drainage areas would include a layer of engineered soil, which is a very highly porous material that will sustain grass at the same time. So, with that as a modification, I did not see it necessary to adjust the drainage calculations for what's going on in the site, I think it'll be adequate. So, that needs to be put on the plan, it was to some extent, but I think that you need to just make a point of that when you come to your approval, to make sure that that's incorporated as a special condition. But, other than that, all the other things in my letter are basically a technical nature, and perhaps can be addressed by the two of the engineers just getting together and resolving it. One other thing I just happened to notice was there are two light poles shown on the plan at the intersection of Beacon and Starboard, there's no details on the plan for those, so perhaps the board would like to see what they're gonna be, how high are they decorative, how much light would be cast, because they're gonna be in the vicinity of units right there, you don't want lights spill off going into bedrooms and so forth during the middle of the night, so. Other than that, I don't have anything further at this time.
Any comments from board members? Mr. King?
No, I read through Charlie's letter, I thought it was quite informative.
Mr. Baptiste?
How's that?
Mr. Schultz?
I have a question for Mr. Buckland, do we need to hear from the Conservation Commission on this, and have we?
No, we don't need to hear from the Conservation Commission on this, that's a separate permit, and they got their opportunity to voice their comments to us previously.
Okay, because I didn't see their comments on the.
They didn't have any comments, 'cause there's no well ends involved in this.
Okay, thank you. And what about the fire department?
The fire department has signed off on it.
Okay, I didn't see that on the website either. So, I don't see the fire department sign off on the website.
Is that typically something that we post up there?
It would be.
So, I can assume that it will be, then?
I, I guess so.
Well, no, it was a question, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand all the process. I do see the comments from the board of health.
Mr. Corbett?
I'm good.
Okay. So, Mr. Fay and Chris, I'm sorry, Tim and Chris, that was poorly done. Is it an undue burden to ask you to include the landscape plans in the next round? Is that okay?
So, I would hope that we would be able to vote with that being a condition, to get resolved with Mr. Rowley, the issues that he has within the 20-day appeal period, and to get submission to you within the 20-day period, acceptable to you of any additional information that we're looking for. That would, that would be our hope this evening, we're really pretty far into this, with the analysis being just do the originally approved plan.
So, I need some, I need some guidance here, I'm unaware of the 20-day issue. Is there, is there a clock?
Yeah, there's, when, when you file a decision, there's a 20-day appeal period that's provided, in which time anybody who wishes to appeal the, the, the permit issued by, by the board can file to the court.
So.
So, that puts it off 20 days beyond, so the 21st day after that's filed with the town clerk, they're, they are then able to get their building permit.
If I may, can we go through the five issues that we were talked?
Sure.
All right. The mailbox, is that, is that an issue to update?
We'll, we'll get them in a location acceptable, submitted and acceptable to the board.
And get a line, get the lines between phase two and phase.
Absolutely can do that.
The detail of the lighting poles?
Absolutely.
And finally, Charlie, I was a little unclear what you're talking to about the, your, your ask around the drainage calculations.
Oh, I was just making that a point, that the drainage calculations, I find the way they are, on the last sheet, the last two paragraphs of the last sheet in my report state that they, we agreed to the stipulation that engineered topsoil in direct contact with permeable underlying sand will be used. So, so long as that's an understanding, and it's used that way, and it gets put on the plan the way that I recommended it, I think we're good.
The plan revisions that Mr. Rowley is speaking of, we'll get those to you this week, I mean, you know, our engineer will turn his attention to those, so those will be submitted.
So, so we're good on, on the five issues that Mr. Rowley has brought to the attention of the board, I assume the board is good with them?
Yep.
I, I'm not good voting on approving a plan set that we don't have the final plans on, let me go right there.
All right, so, I'm not comfortable either with, with approving a special permit based on a final document that we haven't seen yet, that reflect the changes that, that Mr. Rowley has brought up, these five, and the other ones that are still being worked out. And I don't know how to, I don't know how to do this. I, I wanna tell you that right now, I'd see no showstoppers for, for getting this modification done. I just wanna have every member of this board to see that final version of the permit and the major modification to it, and have the opportunity to say, yeah, and at the same time, have a copy they can have in their file. One of the things we're struggling with is finding past documents sometimes, so.
You can, you can do that within the timeframe that you have available in the, in the appeal period, during that time, you get, you receive the plans, and if there are any issues with them, they can't file the, the permit on the land records until such time as you're satisfied with the plans submitted.
I, I, I agree with Richard, I would like to see the plans with the modifications made first.
Mr. Buckland, my concern is our processes and procedures are not tight enough to ensure that we'll ever circle back to that, and confirm that we got those plans in the 20-day appeal period.
The special permit, if you put it in a condition that says it has to come back to you and, and within the 20-day appeal period, then it will happen as, as required, or the building permits won't be issued.
And the plans won't be signed by you, so, to allow it to be put into the registry, so, once it has to come back with no appeal and signed off.
Mr. Chairman, this goes a little deeper than that, in that you've got two documents that you need to see. The first is the modification to the special permit, and there were things that were gonna be incorporated into that special permit, one of which deals with how you deal with security for construction of Bay Point Drive and these roads, as well as a couple of other things. You need to deal with the, uh, rescission of the existing subdivision road for Beacon Street and Starboard Drive, and to approve this one. So, until you get that language in a document that you all can see, I would urge you not to do something, because you, you've got to file your decision with the town clerk, and it doesn't take effect until the town clerk receives that document, you haven't seen it yet. So, I would, my suggestion would be, get a document prepared, either through Tim's office, or however you wanna do it, so that you'll have it to review in the meantime, and we can be working on the technical aspect.
Mr. Rowley?
Excuse me?
We have prepared that document.
Then.
It was submitted.
There's a major modification draft in your folder, that is, is copied from the, major modification number one, same format, and different content because of the difference in the, the two modifications.
Is the subdivision modification in there too, Ken?
Yeah, the subdivision modification is in there too.
Okay.
So, um, Tim, I, I do not wanna cause a hardship, I wanna work on getting this done, but I'm not comfortable signing a document, I'm seeing for the first.
I'm not gonna ask you to do that this evening, I don't want anyone to do something that they're not comfortable with.
And, but, what type of hardship is this putting on you?
It's a, well, we missed a meeting a few weeks ago because we didn't have a quorum.
Yep.
Now, we're not going to, you know, complete our task this evening, so we've lost a month, we've got contractors organized, we've got buyers anticipating a start, it's all issues that are my issues, they're not your issues. It was our intention to be able to, the, the remaining items that Mr. Rowley is looking for is less than a day's worth of work for Mr. Princey V. to get on a set of plans and resubmit. We have been through this process several times now, and we have not reached a point where we have not done what we have talked about, what we said we would do at this table. I think that's a fair statement, Mr. Rowley, I don't know if you'd agree with that?
We agreed with things to be done, the, the problem is that, after I got the plans and ran through what we agreed to do by the first letter that Mr. Princey V. put out, I'm not seeing it here.
Okay.
So, it's a problem.
You're not comfortable doing that, it does create a hardship, and I'm not gonna ask you to do something that you're not comfortable doing.
Good.
I want you, this is a pretty simple modification, at the end of the day, we're, we're building less road, it's less previous condition, which is a good thing, we're pulling homes off the golf course and having more golf course, that's a good thing, same number of units, and we're moving a road, and I certainly recognize there's a lot of technical things taking place in, in that plan set that need to be accurate. I want it accurate, we're gonna build the damn thing, we want it, we wanna build it right, we get it accurate when we go through this process with Mr. Rowley. This, this has been a challenging little stretch of a year that we've been in, we've got some real momentum, and, and losing a month is, is, is a problem, so.
Can I ask you a question?
And I would say simply this with, with contractors and organizing different people, you get geared up, you think you're ready to go, and then you, you sit them back down again. It's hard for me to ask them to wait a month, they're gonna go take another job, then, you know, then I'm on a two-month wait, then I'm on a, all my problems, I'm not here complaining about any of it, we're working hard to, to create something of real value in the town or where hand, so, I'm, I'm answering.
Sure.
Your question, is it a hardship? Sure it is. I also, I'm not here asking anyone to do something that they don't wanna do.
Richard, can I?
Period, full stop.
Can I ask you a question? Why do we have to wait a month? If he says it's only a day's worth of work to make these changes that Charlie's suggesting, why, why can't we hold a, even if we held us?
I'm anticipating we'll, we'll have everything ready to sign at our next meeting, in two weeks?
Yeah.
Right?
So, I mean, it's not really a month that we're talking about, we're talking about two weeks.
From our perspective, they'll be submitted this week.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you misinterpreted, he, 'cause he got hit for two weeks and we didn't have a quorum.
Oh.
All right. So, Chris, you good?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Mr. Rowley?
I wasn't being disparaging.
All right, it'll be our, I will turn to Mr. Rowley at our next meeting, and ask him if all the conditions that he's pointed out to this board and yourselves have been satisfied, and if so, we will sign and approve the major modification, okay?
Very good, thank you very much.
Would it be possible for me to cut a copy of the, the documents there, so that I can refer to them?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
General, have a good evening.
Is this a public hearing?
It's, it's listed on the agenda.
As a continued public hearing?
Yes, so do we have comment from the?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's absolutely true. My bad. And I apologize, so, I would take, entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
It's open already.
Is it?
Yes, it is.
Continue, continue.
You can ask for public comment at this time now.
I don't need to have a motion to continue? All right, so, with that said, I would open the floor to anyone who would like to make a comment, microphone is yours, please come forward and identify yourself, and, please, hi, Annie.
I'm so used to sitting in the chair, seeing the chair there that I thought for a minute.
No, not me, it's you.
Not me.
Your hair gone white. Annie Hayes, and I don't know where. Um, Annie Hayes, and I don't know where this is, I see on a, a cell phone.
Annie, sit down so you're at the mic, okay?
Um, I don't know where this is, I see on a cell phone, it's close to Route Six. Has there been a traffic study for the impact of these residents?
Um, no, because this is an approved, uh, plan that's already in place, and then, and the ask in front of this board is for a modification to it that didn't substantially change any of the traffic issues that was going to happen here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I would, uh, Mr. Baptiste, should we continue the public hearing?
Yes, definitely, you're not going to close it.
So, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
It's August ninth.
Pardon me?
August ninth.
August nine. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass five zero zero, thank you. God, I was doing good too.
Yeah.
Continued public hearing. Item twenty-one dash twenty-one, site plan review, Wareham, Mass., three LLC, ninety-one and one oh one Fearing Hill Road, map ninety-one and seventy-one lots, one thousand and one thousand seven ground-mounted solar array. This is a continued public hearing, exactly the same as the one we just did. This is our second, we opened, we had our initial one a month ago. This is for a solar array proposal on Fearing Hill Road. The applicant was here a month ago, received some feedback from this board, asked for a month to have time to respond, they're back tonight to respond to that. We will listen to their response, we will entertain questions and comments from the board, and then at that point, we will open up the floor to the public. Any comments before we begin? So, I will turn it over to you, please introduce.
Mr. Chairman, I would say congratulations, but I think I'll just say best wishes. For the record, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Shanahan, I'm employed by Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, and a subsidiary LLC is the applicant for the solar array at Fearing Hill Road. As the chairman indicated, and you recall, we were here a month ago, we received some feedback and comments from this board, as well as the public at that time. I'd like to address first comments that were made by the board, and then address a couple of matters that were raised by the public that we didn't have the opportunity to address at that time. First, with regard to the administration from the board and Mr. Rowley, it was noted that as of the last meeting, we hadn't yet submitted the money for the escrow in order for Mr. Rowley to begin his peer review of the project. We have since submitted that check, the escrow account's been established, and as of today, Mr. Rowley issued his first letter of review on the project. To be candid with the board, I've been on the road all day, I know the letter is in, but I haven't had a chance to review it, nor has our engineering consultant, so that will be done over the next couple of weeks. Another matter that was addressed and resolved during the last session, we had filed for a waiver from the buffer, landscape setback buffer around the perimeter of the property, particularly with regard to the land as it abuts the conservation land. This board, I think it was Mr. King specifically, but this board made it clear that that waiver was not going to be granted. We withdrew the waiver, we began revising our site plan with the buffer in full place. Mathematically, that reduces the land of, uh, land disturbance from twenty-seven acres down to twenty-three acres, but that revision will be shown on the plan. Another matter that was raised, and I know this was particularly by Mr. King, was the issue of the utility poles at the site. We had proposed four utility poles, Mr. King indicated that wasn't going to fly. To be candid with you, I've done thirty-eight solar projects in Massachusetts, we've never eliminated all of the utility poles. In this case, we were fortunate, both in my corporate organization and then going into the utility, we would, at this point, submit a revised plan with only one utility pole. That has to be put in, I think Mr. King recognizes that, to bring the wire over Fearing Hill Road to the project site. There'll be no equipment hanging on the pole, it'll just carry the wire. After that pole, everything will be underground, the other poles will be replaced with ground-mounted equipment. That has been approved by my company, and has been approved by the utility, and will henceforth be known as the King Doctrine in my company, but it, it's done. One of the other things that came up, and not unexpectedly, was the board would like line of sight illustrations with regard to possible visual impact of the project from a number of locations. We met with Mr. Buckland and a number of members of the board last week onsite, we went over the site plan, and we agreed on the locations for eleven or twelve of those locations. I would indicate without an illustration that basically what we took is all of the residential properties that faced the site, won't necessarily face the project, but face the parcel, and every other home will have an illustration done, so I think we will capture all of that. Mr. Buckland also asked us to capture the nearest residential property on the other side of the conservation area. It's quite some distance away, but we will provide that illustration from that location. Pardon me, one minute. There was a question raised with regard to the amount of earthwork that is needed. I think there was a misunderstanding by some members of the board, and certainly by some members of the public, because I did receive an inquiry particularly from Ms. Hayes, and I think, and I'm paraphrasing, the question is, what will the impact of us cutting ten feet off the top of the hill have on her property? There is no such proposed cuts on this site. What we're proposing to do is to scrape the site to get the materials to build the berms and the stormwater features. So basically, over the area of twenty-three acres, we will need to scrape a certain amount of fill to create these features, rather than bringing the fill to the site. In no location would we be scraping up to a foot, it will always be less than a foot, and in fact, on average, it'll probably be half of that over the site. There's plenty of land area to, and I'm literally talking about scraping the surface to develop these materials. We will, at the next meeting, provide you with the math, if you will, for the number of cubic yards that we're going to cut and the average scrape, but that's what we're doing. With regard to the residents' comments, just a couple that we didn't have a chance to address, because there were quite obviously a number of people who had comments. The first was Ms. McHale, and I believe Ms. Hayes also, made the comment that they would both like to see this land preserved. I have to tell the board, and I have to tell the public, this site is not going to be preserved. My landowners, Mr. Crespey and Mrs., Mr. Hearn, are in the land development business, they have made it very clear publicly and to me, that if we don't go forward with our solar project at this site, they will proceed with the previously conceptual residential subdivision at this site. So, it is not going to be land that is preserved. I would indicate to you, I reached out to Ms. McHale before our last session, and indicated that I would explore with our landowners the donation of some portion of this site for conservation purposes. Admittedly, it wouldn't be developable land, I can't do that, but we have substantial amount of wetlands on the site between our developable upland and the conservation area, it's probably in the vicinity of seven acres. My thought was, even though it isn't developable, that's what these folks are in the mission of doing. To be candid on the record, that was six weeks ago, Ms. McHale said she'd get back to me, and I've never heard from her, so I don't know where that might stand at this particular point. I would point out, though, that recognizing that it's an either-or, this isn't will the site be preserved or won't it, it's what will be on the site when it's developed. And there are substantial impacts that you would see from a residential development here that you won't see from a solar project. Among those, first of all, is the fact that the trees will still be cut. And someone mentioned the noise of the chainsaw at the last session. Well, the chainsaws are no less loud for residential development than they are for a solar project. But in addition, you'd have far greater land disturbance, because while we're talking about scraping the surface to develop materials, to develop storm features, you'd have significant cuts to do roadway, stormwater, infrastructure, and most important, digging basement foundation holes on this site that you wouldn't see with the solar farm. In addition, as this board is very much aware, the residential subdivision brings in substantially more impervious surfaces to the location than would the solar farm. You're going to have bituminous pavement roadways, bituminous pavement driveways, you're going to have asphalt shingle roofs, patios, and the like. So, for a site that so many people have expressed concern about groundwater runoff as a result of development, I'd respectfully suggest that residential development is going to have far more significant stormwater impact than with this project. This project would have impervious only on the equipment pads on the site. So while a residential subdivision is likely to have somewhere in the vicinity of five to six percent of the site impervious, we're at about zero point zero seven impervious. So a residential development would have literally a hundred times more impervious surface than with the solar. The other part of that is, when the solar project is done, we end up loaming and seeding with pollinator-friendly mix. So we ultimately develop a whole new pollinator habitat at our site. Other than what's on the equipment pads and a small gravel driveway to the site, the rest of it will become meadow, and is a new and very much necessary pollinator habitat in this particular part of the Commonwealth. I'd also indicate, and I think the board is cognizant of it, but I'll, I'll state the obvious, we've got a very low profile, no taller than twelve-foot-high solar panel. If this site is developed for residential purposes, and you're doing two-story gambrels, you're talking about thirty-eight-foot roof peaks and the visual impact of that, and, as an aside, all of those houses could have solar panels on the roof without a permit from this board. So I would respectfully suggest the visual impact, which will be almost insignificant for the solar farm, would be totally different than it would be with the residential development. And there are some other obvious issues. Solar projects don't generate traffic. Once the project's done, we leave, we come back three times a year for inspections, maintenance, and landscaping. We don't put any drain on the town resources, fire, police, first responders, EMS, and the like. We don't generate any traffic, we don't generate any emissions. So when there is a concern for the environment, we need to balance the two potential uses of this property. Couple of other points that were made but weren't documented, and I'm not debating these matters, I just want to put them out there and respond to them. If the individual or individuals that asserted these matters a month ago have documentation to back up their assertions, I welcome it, and I'm sure the board does also, but in reviewing our notes of the proceedings, at least one person indicated this site, and I'm quoting, "is full of endangered species," unquote. That is not true. We've hired a specialist, and they have documented, and we've reported to this board, that there are no endangered species on the site. If in fact, there are experts or there is documentation to contest that, I would welcome seeing it. Second of all, there was at least one assertion that there is a vernal pool or vernal pools on the site. Again, we've hired a wetland scientist who has done the site twice, actually, once during the winter months, which is not the appropriate time to make a final determination on vernal pools, and we brought him back in the spring, which is the window to do vernal pool analysis, and he confirmed there is no vernal pool on the site. There also was an allusion to, and don't hold me to the specifics, but I think one member of the board mentioned it during our site visit last week, about some type of protected ancient way or indigenous path through this site. Again, our experts have found nothing that indicates that. If there is, it's relevant, and I would welcome that to be sent to me and the board so it can be discussed. But again, we've done our homework, we've hired the experts, we have no evidence of any of those being issue, and if there are issues, I'd like to see the documentation to back it up. One other thing that was said by a couple of people, and I know the planning board and Mr. Buckland know better, but it was suggested that this site is not grandfathered under the old zoning law, despite our filing of a preliminary subdivision plan, the intention of which was to freeze the zoning and grandfather the site. And another person said, why is this board considering an application if that isn't the case? Well, clearly, that is the case. I'm sure the board would welcome the fact of our project and maybe others not being before you if that were not the case, but I just want to make it clear on the public record that you're not going through this for no reason, that we, we do have the right to be here. Couple of housekeeping items, oh, and one more thing about the residential development versus the solar project. I mentioned no waiver for the tree cutting and the landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site. If this site were developed for residential purposes, there is no such requirement in the town of Wareham as far as developing house lots and roadways and the like. So you've got a natural buffer by virtue of your applicable zoning with the solar project that there is no guarantee of if this project is developed for residential purposes. With regard to the waivers, by the way, a couple of matters that I'd like to address, one of which could only be informal at this point, and then the other is a little bit more formal. But when we filed our preliminary subdivision plan, I don't know what any of you call it, but basically, in order to comply with the frontage requirements for Lot One and Lot Two, we've shown a proposed cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac to provide that frontage for each of the lots, even though both lots have ample frontage on Fearing Hill Road. We will, when we come in with the definitive subdivision plan, ask this board to waive the construction of the paving of that cul-de-sac, much like you discussed with five thirty-two Main Street earlier this evening. There's really no purpose for us to go in and cut that out and lay down all of that bituminous pavement for the purposes of the solar project. We would instead put in an eighteen-twenty-two-foot gravel driveway into the site in compliance with the fire department requirements, but I, I suspect the neighbors and the community would much prefer not seeing all of that pavement there, which serves no purpose. When the time comes, we'll ask for a waiver of that, and certainly the board can put, if they approve the waiver, that the waiver only applies so long as the site is used for solar project. If it subsequently is to be developed for any other purpose, the developer would have to revisit the issue of the public way to be developed there. The, the reason I bring it up tonight is without getting a commitment from the board, if the board generally agrees that that's the way to go, I'd prefer, as we go forward with the revised site plan that you will be reviewing and acting upon, to show what actually would be on the ground, as opposed to what legally would be required and perhaps not constructed. So I So I don't know how the chair or the board might address that, but if I see four heads nod that say it's likely we would waive that bituminous pavement, then I'd go forward with my revised site plan showing you exactly what would be at that location.
I will comment to you personally, from my perspective only. If this was to go forward, I would expect the cul-de-sac to be removed and some type of twisty road, if you will, to be there to take advantage of some of the techniques that Charlie taught me over on Church Pond Road, to hide it.
I understand your comments entirely. In fact, your board members during our site visit last week made the same comment, and we will be adding landscaping that doesn't show at this point so that if there is any line of sight issue despite the long unwinding road, if you will, it will be completely screened from public view on the public way.
So my head's nodding up and down for you, all right?
The other issue I would bring to the board, and we talked about it ever so briefly at the last session, was we did request a waiver of the, I don't know whether you term it a tree assessment or a tree inventory, but as we are proposing the clearcutting, and I hate to use that word, but that's what it is, of approximately 23 acres, I'm not sure what purpose would be served for me to go in and inventory every tree that I'm going to propose to cut down. So I don't know whether the board will act this evening on that, but I don't want to go out and do an inventory and an assessment if I don't have to. I honestly believe it's a waste of time and effort, but if the board tells me I must, I shall.
I will comment that I've been informed that the technology is out there to do the inventory quicker than you might think. And I appreciate your comment as to why inventory trees that we're going to take down, other than to fully understand the impact of the action. So I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight myself, but it's a...
I'm familiar with the technology, Ms. Chairman, and we've done it in other locations. I would suggest to the board, if you're familiar with the site, that the trees there are fairly consistent throughout the site, and I would ask if it makes sense that we take a representative sample, perhaps 25% of the site, and inventory that and then extrapolate it logically.
To this board, I would propose that we consider that request and address it at our next meeting. Is people okay with that?
Random sample rather than...
Not to make a decision, but to think about, the ask is to waive it 100%. The proposal is maybe do a 25% substantive, not substantive, representative sample or request that the entire thing be inventoried. Ponder that, and I think it would be fair that this board could answer the question at our next meeting.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Yep.
Michael?
Still on the fence. I'm still on the fence.
Yeah, me too. Me too. That's why I want two weeks to think about it. So let's move forward with that plan, okay? Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman. We obviously have a way to go.
Okay. Now we'll turn to the board for any comments, questions that they want to make. Anyone chomping at the bit? Carl?
Another question from Mr. Buckland. I know this project is before the Conservation Commission. Will we expect to hear from them before we need to make a decision? And this is a process question that you and I have sort of been going on in a couple of projects. I want to know what our decision-making is vis-à-vis their recommendations.
Yeah, and your permit is wholly separate from the Conservation Commission permit process. You have different criteria that you're looking at, and you have to make a determination based on the criteria that you have before you.
So why is that one of the inputs we ask for then in our process?
In case there's some major issue that has to be addressed that would affect the outcome of the project.
Well, how would we know that there's a major issue if we don't get their report?
If we don't get the report, then they're not feeling that it's necessary to tell us that there's an issue.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I understand the board member's concern. I, as a matter of practice, would never ask a planning board to vote without an order of conditions in place or to vote conditional upon an order of conditions. We want to get through conservation. If we have to make any changes to the plan, we want those changes to be made before this board considers the plan. So I'll make the commitment that we certainly would never ask this board to act unless and until we have an order of conditions issued.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the Conservation Commission likes to see the decisions made by the other boards before they issue their permits.
It becomes a circular process.
Yeah, this is a double jeopardy, and the reason why, there are separate permits, and you have to act separately from the other board and commission.
Okay.
But you can say that an order of conditions has to be issued before the project proceeds, since that would be necessary anyway if the project were to proceed.
Okay, so we're not obligated to see their input before we can decide?
No, you're not.
Thank you.
Did you want to continue with any direct questions to the applicant, Carl?
The applicant answered most of the questions that we discussed either at the last meeting or we didn't really discuss them on the walkthrough, but Mr. Shanahan reviewed the open conditions. And I think he summarized, again, exactly what he said before.
Mrs. Corbett?
Can I tell the questions? Mr. Baptiste?
Not at this time.
Mr. King?
I have a couple thoughts, questions. So the question of the potential increase and problematic runoff from the land clearing has been brought up half a dozen times. Is that going to be a function of conservation as to whether or not that is in fact a real problem, or is there a study that needs to be considered?
A stormwater study has to be provided. The Conservation Commission only considers the area within their jurisdiction, the 100 feet from the wetland buffer, wetland line.
Anything else?
So anything else outside of that, you have to consider, and what you want to do is look at the whole project, the total site drainage, including that that goes into the wetland areas.
Okay. So obviously, that would be a condition of approval then, would be a stormwater, an acceptable stormwater study.
Yeah, Mr. King, as I said, I haven't seen Mr. Rowley's letter yet, but I'm going to presume, because I've seen his work before.
That is going to be very detailed.
There'll certainly be some reference to stormwater and groundwater runoff.
Okay. The other, these two are just off-the-page thoughts that has come up before, but not with you. So when we were discussing an earlier project, I believe it was a make-piece project, there was the question of the tree clearing and the proceeds that are, the proceeds that you get from the sale of the lumber. And Makepeace was more than generous enough to donate those proceeds to the Conservation Committee. Would that be something that you would consider?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And the reason I say this is, you know, we can go through all of the hoops of making sure that there's line of sight that, you know, doesn't negatively impact any residents. We can make sure that the stormwater runoff isn't going to add to an already problematic water in the basement for some of these folks, which is, again, you know, we want to make sure, they've already got water in their basement, so we don't want to make it worse. So if there was some sort of a, you know, we really can't find a way to stop the water and not cut down the trees, if there was something that the town got back in return to kind of offset the slave clearing, that would definitely be...
I understand your concern, Mr. King, and I'll look into, I know you're talking about some type of mitigation, et cetera, et cetera, but with regard to your reference to groundwater and you can't do anything about it, we're required to do something about it. We cannot go forward, and you, as a board, will not approve this project, nor do you approve any project where there is an increase in the groundwater runoff as a result of the project.
Well, I'd even like to harbor some hope that maybe with engineering and good planning that you actually help reduce it.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
Never know.
I knew I shouldn't have gotten rid of your utility polls so easily.
Yeah, well, you're going to pay for the King document comment now. And then the other thing that I've brought up several times is, you know, again, you've got a cluster of families that surround this piece of property that are going to be impacted to some degree. I mean, we've got this...
I'm not sure that's the case, but I understand where you're going.
Is there any opportunity for some sort of like a net metering agreement for the people that are affected?
For them to get some of the benefit of the production from the facility?
Exactly.
Definitely. I can definitely explore that.
I mean, it seems like we're constantly facing these solar farms, and, you know, the people who live right next door to them are the ones that pay the price. So if there was, you know, it can't be stopped or it won't be stopped, you know, it fits all of the zoning bylaw regulations and it's going to go in regardless, you know, having something to kind of offset the sitting on the deck and, you know, you talk about the 100-foot screening and the view that we had from Ferring Hill Road the day that we visited, your argument was pretty strong, that brush is pretty dense, and I'm confident that from Ferring Hill Road, no one's going to see that project. We can't guarantee that every single piece of property that abuts that land is going to enjoy that same opportunity of having complete buffering, where you see nothing on this. So if there was something to offset the inconvenience, and again, it's just a thought, you know...
I will take a look at a all-encompassing mitigation plan, if you will, rather than addressing them line by line.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at that, and I'll have something for you two weeks from now.
Thank you.
Mr. Swenson?
My turn?
I had one more question.
Please, go ahead.
I think Mr. Buckland sent us an idea. Would it, would you consider, I understand that this area currently has trails and walking trails that may proceed through it, that will be disrupted, and that's the owner's right. Would you consider perimeter trails that are out, that was what you suggested, right, Ken, some trails around the outside of the...
That could be a possibility, as long as it doesn't affect the buffer that is necessary to protect visual impact.
So when you look at your mitigation plan, could you look at something like that?
We can take a look at that. I would indicate that we have not gone to the Conservation Commission for permission to install any nature trails or the like within their jurisdiction, and I'd be hesitant to do that. But maybe I can talk with Ken and get a better handle on what, if anything, we can do.
It was an idea that I thought was interesting.
Yeah, well, if you, within the 100-foot buffer zone, if you created a three-foot-wide walking trail, I'm sure that's not going to affect the...
We'll take a look at it.
...the buffer.
30 inches is okay? Up to 30 inches is non-jurisdictional? Thank you.
Rich is indicating that up to 30 inches is non-jurisdictional with that type of path. So we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
All right, my turn, okay? A couple things, and most of them have already been talked about. I apologize, I was out of town and I couldn't do the site visit with you, and I'm very glad that our members did...
You were well-represented.
That's what I was told, so. The line of sight's very important to me. I'm hearing positive words that the neighborhoods aren't going to have this in their site. We'll see, I'm anxious to see. I'm very pleased that the requests were put in as extensively as they were. I've looked at the soil data from the, that I can get online, and I've talked, I've listened to Mike talk about the glacier...
Glacier till.
The glacier till. I've talked to some of the people that have already spoke to us about the water in their basements, and we've talked about stormwater. I'm not so concerned about stormwater, I'm much, I am concerned about it, I'm much more concerned, though, about groundwater. How deep that water can go before it starts going horizontal as opposed to vertical. I'm very concerned about the people that have told me that their pumps are running all the time. I'm struggling to come up with a strategy that says a project like this isn't going to make that worse. So I'll be very, very interested to see how the data comes back and what you have to share with us there. And finally, on, and you're going to have to forgive me here, in the site plan application that you did, there's a checkbox for a environmental impact study, which I believe was indicated is not applicable in your application. I'm struggling with that as well. I think that from an environmental point of view, you did talk to, I did read the parts in there about the endangered species, I read about the vernal pools, but I didn't read about the groundwater. So I'm going to be poking at that real, real hard, and I just don't, I don't have any, I don't, no expectation of an answer tonight, I just want you to know where I'm at right now.
I appreciate the heads up.
That's all I have. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Rowley, anything?
I made some notes here that I'd like to address a little bit, if I can, with respect to some of the comments that Mr. Shanahan made. I think he made the comment that if there was a subdivision plan that was approved for the site, that there could be no, or there would be no restrictions on the amount of clearing that would take place as opposed to this site, which is somewhat controlled. That's not exactly true, because under a subdivision plan, the planning board has the authority, under conditions of subdivision approval, to limit the amount of clearing that can take place on any lot, if there are conditions that suggest that that should take place. So I don't think it's quite appropriate to say that it would be unrestricted, because I think the planning board could, if it ran up against that condition in such a way.
May I ask, Mr. Rowley, if you recall that ever having been done in a subdivision?
Yes. I won't swear that it's been done here, but I know that it's been done in other places.
Okay. Thank you.
You may, I can understand the request for a waiver on the cul-de-sac. One point about that is, though, that right now you are under a preliminary subdivision plan, and within seven months, you're going to have to be considering the subdivision definitive plan as a prerequisite for this project, because as of this moment, that project does not have frontage. All it has is the area around a proposed subdivision lot with frontage there, which does not exist yet. So anything that you would prepare to do has to be done with the idea in mind that you've got to create that frontage somewhere along the line in order for this project to have the frontage that it needs, otherwise it's a non-buildable lot.
Mr. Rowley, if I might interject, this application is for 91 and 101 Ferring Hill Road. We have everything to the right of that cul-de-sac. We have more than ample frontage on Ferring Hill Road for this lot.
Well, you cut off, you cut off the lot in the front, which would be the southwest, and that's a separate, that's a separate lot from...
It's part of our lease area, though. It's on the site plan and part of this project. I mean, if the board decides you want me to build my cul-de-sac, I won't contest it.
You're still going to have to do something with respect to a subdivision in order for you to retain the... you to retain the use density.
Yep.
That you get from having filed that plan. But right now, that does not exist. And if you're relying on the frontage of, of Ferring Hill Road, then, and you're saying, well, that's where my frontage is, that does not comply with your subdivision requirements that give you the user options that you now really have. So I'm just pointing that out.
All I'm suggesting is the cul-de-sac does give us the required legal frontage.
Yes, it does.
And I would ask that we not have to construct the cul-de-sac, but the lines on the plan remain.
I understand that perfectly.
Thank you.
So, so long as the two work together, you'll be all right.
Thank you.
I don't have any problem with, with doing the tree inventory, say, on a, a rand, or a sample of a portion of it and say, well, this is what it appears to be for the site if it's done properly. Somehow you'll have to see your way clear to say that that is in compliance with the regulation. Maybe it is. It would be nice to know if there are trees that are over 18 inches in diameter on the site, that at least that declaration be made. There may be portions of the site that you might say, well, there's a cluster here, maybe that should be saved. Right now, we don't know whether that exists or not. But it's still part of the zoning bylaw, so you're going to find a way to say that what you've sort of suggested is going to match that requirement. So just bear that in mind. The other thing about the Conservation Commission is they do have jurisdiction over wetlands and a 100-foot buffer beyond that. And any activity you do there, you either have to file a request for determination or a notice of intent. But there's one more stipulation, that they also have jurisdiction over any impacts that affect that property if it comes from an outside source. But they can only take advantage of that if and when there is an impact. So if there is some impact that goes to within that 100-foot buffer or within the wetland that's a result of activity outside that zone and it does something to impact conservation concerns, they can get involved.
From, on, excuse me, they can get involved in relationship to them and their permit?
Yes, yes.
They're already involved, Mr. Rowley.
I understand that, but all I'm saying is that the Conservation Commission does not strictly end at the 100-foot buffer line. Because if there are impacts that take place after the fact that impact what they've got, now they can come in and say, okay, now we're going to take jurisdiction over what's happened and make, get the issue taken care of. With respect to walking trails, just a point, that whether the trails exist today or not, I don't know. I don't know who walks there, I don't care who walks there. But if I were the landowner, I would be very concerned about opening it up to just anybody to walk through there without there being some sort of a liability concern. And I would just caution the board to make any conditions that walking trails be imposed here without getting something from the applicant that says he absolves the town of Wareham from any liability that may result from allowing people to walk there. Just the point. With respect to my letter, if you want me to get into that a little bit?
Sure.
I will. This was probably one of the more difficult ones that I've had to review because of the site conditions that exist. I've lived in the West Wareham area all of my life, except for a small part of it in which I was out at school. And I can't tell you the number of times that I travel up and down Ferring Hill Road. I know that Mr. Baptiste does because he lives not too far away. I can remember several cases where that old rail line that went to Whitehead Sandpit is flooded in the wintertime almost to Ferring Hill Road. So, and that's because of the conditions of the surrounding landscape and I'll get into that in a minute. But one of the things that you'll want to be concerned with and be assured of would be regardless of what gets done, whether it's this or something similar to it or whatever, that that condition does not get made worse. Because if it begins to flood over on Ferring Hill Road, now you've got a public safety issue for sure. That rail line is not used anymore, but I don't know, maybe today you could see groundwater sitting there, I don't know. But I know in the spring of the year, in the winter of the year, it can be a problem. I've observed it myself and I'm sure that probably a lot of the folks in the audience may have done so also. But to be more specific about the site, I went through the information that was presented and in the documentation for the calculations for runoff, each of the soil characteristics are identified. But you don't get the description of what was there or what is there and what the permeability conditions of the soil are through what's been presented to date. What you've got is a soils report and a calculation document that says that based on what DEP says these soils are in terms of, it's either a B soil or a C soil or a D soil, which means, if it's a D, it means it's relatively impervious, you can't get anything through it. An A soil is the best and an A soil would be similar to what you saw on Charge Pond Road or Tyonet Road where all that nice deep sand occurs. You don't have that here. The top of the ridge says that it is consisted of a soil in the B group. But when you go to the B group and you read it, although it's rapid infiltration at the surface, it reaches a point not too far down to where the infiltration potential is from zero to something like .14 inches per hour. So it means that the ability of the runoff to run straight down as it would on any of these other sites you've seen is not here today on this site. And it's the same for the other soils. So what will happen, once you clear the trees, I doubt that they're going to use a chainsaw. They're probably going to go in, if they do it, with a large machine that snips the tree off at the bottom, picks the whole tree up and runs it through a chipper, similar to what's been done in other places, leaving a stump. Unless they intend to keep the stumps there, which is going to make it impossible to put the panels in, they're going to have to remove those stumps. As soon as you remove the stumps, you will have disturbed all of the soil around the stump and around the immediate vicinity, disturbing whatever natural ability for infiltration it had. Because the stumps are going to come out, the soil's going to come out, there's going to be a hole left by the stump, which gets filled in and graded off with who knows what then. So the removal of topsoil after the stump removal, the removal of the stump themselves are going to leave the site in what I would consider to be an unnatural surface state. That has a significant impact on the amount, the ability of that parcel to receive the runoff and then potentially distribute it in an appropriate way. To make a long story short, I've made a recommendation that actual infiltration tests be done on that site. Because once you strip that soil, you're going to be left with whatever is underneath it and whatever infiltration rate it will take. And it isn't necessarily going to be exactly for a B soil or a C or a D. It's going to be what you measure in the field. And the soils report basically says that. Because the infiltration goes from zero to .14 inches per inch to .22 inches per inch. The description of the groundwater is anywhere from 12 to 36 inches, depending on where you are and what soil group you're in. So it's a tough site to work with and I think that one of the things that should be considered is a reduction of the site in terms of its overall size. By doing that, especially around the perimeters, you will be allowing the natural condition to exist, which will help not only slow down the amount of water that is coming from the sky because the trees are going to take some of it. Some of the runoff will be taken up through the root structure, which will still remain. And the rest of it will go down through the soil as it naturally does. So my recommendation in the last letter, last portion of my letter, is that there needs to be onsite testing, that the applicant recommend a size reduction, that the natural buffers in the east and west portions of the site be increased substantially to retain the natural capacity to absorb runoff, especially on steeper slopes. To move the detention areas to within the reduced site area to allow for the runoff to occur over larger portions of natural cover. To reduce the opening of the site to as to minimum visual impacts. And then lastly, to revise the curve number for grassed slopes. Now, it's been suggested that meadow grass is going to be used to cover the slopes afterwards. Once you remove the vegetation and subject that site to a southerly summer sun, you're going to have a lot of that grass dry out. That being the case, you may not get any, get 75% and better good grass cover, which is in the calculation for the runoff. The next category would be less than 75%, which reduces the amount of infiltration and increases the runoff, which I think could possibly take place. So that's an overview of what I see for the site. There are specific details in the letter, which I understand Mr. Shanahan hasn't seen. Perhaps Mr. Tabasinski hasn't seen it or have been able to respond to it yet and I respect that. It went out on the 20th of July, so there's pretty short time for anybody to respond and do much. But there are some other things in there, which is sort of a technical aspect about radii for, for roads for access around the site, some other things in there which we don't need to get into, but that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley. I'll go back around the board one more time real quick. Carl?
Yes, this is a procedural question, perhaps Mr. Buckland or Mr. Rowley can answer. I believe everyone is doing a good faith effort to estimate the impact of this project on runoff, groundwater dispersal. What happens if we get it wrong? I mean, if there is a significant impact after the project is built, who's responsible? What happens then?
And it probably goes to a court of decision on that.
So the homeowners impacted would have to sue the, sue the project? Is that what you're saying or?
The, the project or the town or whoever they feel is necessary to correct the problem.
Okay, so it would, there's no immediate recourse, it would have to be a court decision?
Unless you were to put in a condition on your approval that allowed you to come back and reconsider based on the impact of the performance standard, as it were, that would require the, the project to meet some certain standards, which would be impact to the neighboring property owners. And there has to be proof that that was the case, that there was impact as a result of the project as well. And if in that case, then you could reconsider the, the approval that you provided.
Is, are there tests that we could baseline and then add that condition? I mean, are there standard tests, everybody would agree, yes, this is a good measure of that, of that impact?
Well, what, what I would suggest is you get a hydrogeologist, ask the, the proponent to hire a hydrogeologist to better describe the groundwater conditions in the area and the soil conditions and where the water, groundwater is moving to and how it would change as a result of the, the construction of the project. This would give you the, the kind of information that you need to be reasonable about what kind of impact the site would have to the neighboring residents.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate where the board member is going, but, but I think you're jumping to the worst-case scenario, which by the way, I don't think would ever happen.
Well, I, I did, I agree.
But I would, I would not want to plan for a catastrophic event. If you're concerned about that, you're legitimately concerned about that, I would suggest that perhaps the board might want to consider incorporating a monitoring program into an approval so that you're tracking it rather than waiting for something to happen. And if it tracks in a manner that's unacceptable, remedial efforts are made in advance of a event.
Carl, I, I think that I'm right on board with you, but we're not there yet. You know what I mean? I think we need to see some more data, but. Mr. King, any more comments, questions?
No.
Mr. Baptiste?
I got, I got a couple now. From some of the comments from Mr. Rowley, you know, I agree with him 100%. And you made a statement earlier that you're going to use scrapings to do all your berms and everything else. What's the scrapings consist of? The vegetation that exists there now, right?
Oh, to some degree, absolutely. As any development on that site would.
You know, I don't believe in, you know, hey, let's try, if it doesn't whip, we'll come back, we'll see what we can do.
That's never what I suggested, Mr. Baptiste, and you know that.
I just think it's a terrible site. Terrible site.
Anything else, Mr. Baptiste?
No, that's it for right now.
Mr. Schultz?
Oh, no, I asked my question, thank you.
Go.
A couple of points, and this has to do, deal with the alternative development of the site. He said that there is residential development that could occur and the owners wanted to do that. One of the reasons they may not have proceeded with that is because of the soil conditions and the groundwater elevations in the, in the site. And I think that's the reason why we want to have a hydrogeologist to be hired by them to identify the conditions on the, on that till hill and let us know what the implications are to other, other development at the site.
Okay.
Ken, if we can take that one, one little further. A site right down the street from there was also scheduled for residential and after quite extensive studies, it wasn't feasible and they walked away from it. You know, they're coming in here putting a gun to our head, basically says, hey, if you don't do this, we're going to do that. Let them go for it. Let them go for it.
Okay, Mr. Corbett? Any perks been done?
No, based on Mr. Rowley's report, this board suggested a month ago that we do onsite testing, which we intended to do. I'm not at all surprised at Mr. Rowley's comments.
What about for the development?
Pardon me?
What about for the development? Has anything been done?
I don't.
The development you keep talking about? If it's going to not be.
Residential development.
I'm sorry. Have any been done for that project? Perks?
There have not been.
Anything else?
Another, another point, follow-up on what Charlie had said about the trails. State law provides a benefit of reducing liability if there's public access that's granted on your property.
Any response that you'd like to make before I open it up to the public?
No, I'm good for now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will comment that, I mean, Ken's comment about the hydrologist, the geohydrologist and whatnot is right where I'm thinking, that you're probably thinking based on all, what my comments were, Mike King's were, Mr. Rowley's comments were. That's what I, I'm looking for, the data.
Of course.
Right, so, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. With that, I will, thank you for being here. I will open it up to the public. I would ask you to come up, identify yourself, I'll limit you to three minutes.
And not say the same thing.
Pardon me?
And not say the same thing.
And, and not say the same thing, so.
My name is Eric Lintola, I live on Squirrel Island Road, right behind the residence on Ferring Hill. A planning board meeting on January 28th was enlightening. It was a moving experience to hear the many concerns from residences on Ferring Hill Road as to why this solar field should not go forward. Also enlightening was the peer review report on the Ferring Hill Road solar project submitted on July 20th by Mr. Charles Rowley, consulting engineer for the town of Wareham. This is not an argument against solar energy, but it is where they have been allowed to place these structures are the main concern, which we've all heard many times. The loophole created allowing them to be built in residential neighborhoods, neighborhoods was a major mistake. Being that the zoning bylaws govern the building and locations of solar energy generation facilities, I would like to comment and address several issues in those bylaws. Page 45, item 591, a purpose, quote, "to encourage the use of solar energy generation facilities," end quote. At the present time, Wareham has about 19 such facilities and several more waiting in the wings for approval. This is quite an accomplishment, bringing clean energy business to our community. It is good for the production of clean electricity and it brings stimulus money to our town. However, that loophole allowing them to build in residential neighborhoods and on forested lands that have seen hundreds of acres of trees cut down so far has left many residents upset, confused and wondering if this is such a good idea after all. Also stated, quote, "solar facilities that address public safety minimize impacts on scenic, natural and historic resources of the town," end quote. I do not believe that many of the solar fields that have been constructed have really considered exactly what minimize impact means. So let us not forget that the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Heritage Landscape Inventory Program of Ware, the city of Wareham, Heritage Landscape Inventory Program of Wareham, the city of Wareham, reconnaissance report clearly states, and I quote, and I quote, "Ancient Indian Route." The ancient Indian Route through the Wee Weantic watershed was also listed as a significant cultural resource, which has not been well documented and is threatened by development," end quote. And this is a quote from that resource, that report.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I didn't realize there was a time limit.
I've been pretty clear about that. I'll grant you another minute, okay?
Okay, now, let me, I'm going to skip through many important issues. I read Mr. Rowley's report, and there are many red flags, and I'm sure you've all, maybe you've read it, or maybe you're in the process of reading it. That report said a whole hell of a lot to me today, and I don't need to read everything else they've gotten here, addressing the bylaws, which there are many. So, I will finish with the last. Under criteria for special permit review and approval, item five-nine-six-point-two, quote, "The zoning board of appeals shall also impose, in addition to any applicable conditions specified in this section, such conditions as it finds responsibly appropriate to safeguard the neighborhood," end quote. What exactly does that mean, to safeguard the neighborhood? I have read Mr. Rowley's peer report very carefully and its recommendations. I find it full of concerning issues which make me question the viability of this project to go forward. I also, I also find many red flags. I should be, make everyone question this project before going forward.
I need you to wrap it up.
I'm going, last few sentences, please. We need to be better stewards of our neighborhoods and our natural landscapes for their disappearing at an alarming rate. Mr. Shanahan states his company, this solar field wants to be and will be a good neighbor. To relocate to a more appropriate location would be a good neighbor. And let's not get it wrong, please.
Thank you. Next?
Kathy Papalardo, wearing two hats. I'm in a butter on Ferring Hill Road, and I'm also with Nancy McHale, the property stewards for the town-owned Ferring Hill Conservation Area that the Wareham Land Trust holds the conservation restriction on. The town owns it, and we protect it. So I'm here wearing that hat also. I know I'm timed, I'll go quick. I have to say, I agree with Charlie, that there needs to be an onsite infiltration study, a hydrological study. What's written up in the books with the Plymouth County Soil Surveys is meaningless if you're not there. Years ago, they said bumblebees couldn't fly if you calculated it. Tell that to a bumblebee. I have seen Wareham Fire Department pump out two of my neighbors' basements, and we're not at the top of the hill, we're on the east, east side of it, if I got that right. As for the vernal pool, yes, vernal pools are usually in the spring. To make a true judgment, their study was done on March twenty-second. That's the very beginning of spring. They also talk about, it needs two years in a row that you would go to a site at an appropriate time, because March twenty-second, one year, we might have frozen ground. March twenty-second next year, it may be wetter. So, one shot at March twenty-second to say there's no vernal pool is not fair. That's not a true assessment. And, one last point, the development that Mr. Baptiste referred to from several years ago, I went to those planning board meetings. That developer wanted to develop the Ferring Hill Conservation Area site. They drove a backhoe all through that property, through the streams, with no permission. They couldn't get it to perk. So then their plan was, they were going to put in a sewage treatment plant, thank you, Mike, right on the Wee Weantic River, because it would not pass a perk test. That project was denied by the planning board, and that was the end of it. Thank you. Please consider everybody that lives up there.
Thank you, Kathy. Next?
I actually saw that done.
Sorry?
I actually saw that done backhoe. Sorry, I lost my voice. I actually saw that backhoe.
Drifted all up?
Hi, I'm Marsha Campbell, and I've lived here all my life.
Can you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
I'm Marsha Campbell, and I've lived here all my life. I grew up, I spent twenty-four years at seventy-three Ferring Hill Road, and when my father gave the addition, I got the basement bedroom, which meant I was underwater quite a while. And to this day, I know it's not fixed, so that's a problem. My question for if it goes through and is done, and it was asked to me by somebody else, is Wareham getting the energy that this is going to produce? And if not, is it being rented out by a neighboring town, and Wareham getting a percentage? If the solar system is built?
I can answer that, Rich.
Pardon me?
I can answer that. We've spoken at length with different solar developers.
Pull your mic in.
We've spoken at length with the different solar developers in town, and the town of Wareham does not get any of the generated power. We've already committed to purchasing power through another agreement, and we don't even use what we're buying now. We don't use all of it. So, the quick answer is no. We are not getting the benefit of it, which is why I brought up the possibility of a net metering agreement for the surrounding landowners.
Okay, because this is my first planning board meeting, and I didn't know if that was discussed, but I know that I bought my first house in West Wareham because I lived in West Wareham and liked West Wareham the way it is.
I live in West Wareham, too. I think it's pretty nice over there.
My second question was, you said that you had experts, your experts? I wondered if they had names, and if we were allowed to have them on paper? Because you said you had experts that said this was, that there was no, you know, special animals in there, that you were, all this stuff, you just said your experts.
Mr. Shanahan, do you want to respond, or do you want to defer till the next meeting?
Well, I'll respond, because the lady deserves an answer. We've hired certified environmental... We have a number of certified environmental consultants who've done this work and submitted their reports over their names. I'm happy to share it with you. It's all on file with the town.
That would be great, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Melker, I'm in Butter. This is where I live. You didn't come to my house. I live right there. I'm going to be looking at it. This is all nice trees, but this is my house. I'm going to be looking at that. That's my whole backyard. Notice you don't need a mic. As it is now, I see Walmart, Target, Lowe's. So now you're going to take down the rest of the trees. I think the project should be scrapped. We voted on it. These are inappropriate for residents. Thank you, Mr. Baptiste, because it is, it's a destruction of our property, our neighborhood. I don't want anything from these people. What I want is for them to all go away, and let the trees grow. And yes, Mr. Shanahan, there are endangered animals. All of them are endangered. You lose your home, you're all endangered, right? Floods, hurricanes? This isn't a flood or hurricane, this is not a man, this is not a natural disaster, this is a man-made disaster. So, that, with that being said, and again, his, I love his meadow flowers, and we'll have birds and butterflies, and then they'll come in with the roundup. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alice Duffy. I live at one-one-two Ferring Hill Road, and I'm one of the people that have been infected by the water. I've had the fire department at my property pumping my cellar out because it was full of water quite a few times. So, the only thing that really concerns me about this whole project is, is this going to make it worse for me? Am I going to end up with more water? I've had water in my front yard going halfway across my yard. I shouldn't probably have done this, but I've taken a pump, and I pumped that water out into the street to get it out of my yard.
Did you make a note of that, Mike?
I'm sorry, but, I mean, you know, it comes to the point where the water is just way too much to deal with, and I've had to deal with this issue for many years. I've been living there for over thirty years, and it's been, always been an issue over in that area. So taking down these trees, tearing apart this land, if it's going to affect us with a running water coming across Ferring Hill Road, what are we going to do? I want to make sure that I'm protected from all of this. If something has to be built over there, then let it be solar instead of a hundred houses over there. But, you have to understand what we go through in that land as it is now.
Can you tell me your address again?
One-one-two Ferring Hill Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'd like to give each of you this map, may I, Richard?
Of course. Annie's going to hand out some material to each of the planning board members right now, and then she'll sit down, introduce herself, and we'll be able to hear what she has to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am literally behind the hill, so you are in my backyard, not in my backyard. There are a lot of comments, rebuttals. Richard, I'm feeling that three to four minutes for people who are going to live with this project for forty-five years is inadequate, and I would like you to reconsider, please.
I will make that decision at the end of three minutes.
Okay. There's so many, thank you, Mr. Rowley, thank you, Mr. Baptiste. It takes people who know this land to speak of it. I've been here for only six years, but I already have learned so much. And this map here is done by Kevin Barsh, because I said to him a couple days ago, Kevin, this ridge, Ferring Hill, has got to be a watershed deliverer, part of the watershed. And I know that, well, let me just go back, the blackest is the highest point, that's ninety feet above sea level. I thought I had heard they were removing some, but I, it made sense, too, because if you see, I'm upside down, I guess, if you, this is Ferring Hill down here. If you see the triangle, it's hard to see, but it's a red crosshatch, that is the site. I'm sorry, you guys, did you...
I can see it.
That's where the panels are. And how are they directing the rain that has always fallen down on the backside of Ferring Hill? They're directing it towards Ferring Hill Road. All that rain is going to hit seventy-three-hundred impermeable, large, black panels, and it is going down towards the road. So, does it affect the wetlands behind them, this little square where they have wetlands? Oh, yes, it does. Does it affect my wet meadow, which is under conservation, I mean, yeah, conservation is important area? Does it affect the water that drains down this wooded area and down my dry meadow, which is said to be the last meadow of Wareham, down into the wooded land that is wet and leads to the Wee Weantic? This is a watershed area. Butterflies or bees, the pollinators are out of sync now. It was a hundred degrees in June, the blossoms happened, the pollinators haven't arrived. If you read Science Journal, whatever, it's always there. This is happening. And as far as, let's not worry about it until the worst-case scenario comes, or until we have evidence, it was the worst case in Germany last week. It's the worst case somewhere in our country every day. The droughts are more severe, the rains are more intense, and there is absolutely no scientific evidence that this will abate, but that it will worsen. So, the earth is complex. Of course, if you take up all of the topsoil, you're removing all of the roots. If you lose the stumps, you're losing that, that's what the trees do for that hill. That's why it's such a beautiful forest.
Miss Hayes, I'll grant you another two minutes.
Thank you. That's why there is a community of wildlife there, including eastern box turtles. I know for one. And there are plants, I'm losing my train of thought, of course, there are plants. This is one of the eighteen-inch diameter trees that are not to be counted and listed as N.A. on the application, because there are too many of them, perhaps. Well, doesn't that say something? There are too many of them. These are the sixty-five abiders and neighbors who signed this petition, who were horrified. Many of them had no idea this could possibly happen. They were shocked. I have a written statement, and I wanted to address it to you, because it tells you what your authority is. The Mass General Law Forty-A, Section Three, says that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And I say that Ferring Hill's siting needs such reasonable exclusion from siting solar there on all three counts, for the safety, health, and welfare of the residents of our neighbor. None of the neighbors talked about my property values. They talked about the forest, the climate. When you have all of those solar panels, you create a heat island, four to seven degrees warmer, and it maintains during the night because of the energy coming from the battery storage. That means the ACs go on. That means there's more carbon dioxide. ACs, if you've read, are one of the greatest feeders of increase of CO2.
Thirty seconds.
So, there's a loop. Thirty seconds?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know where to begin, but anyway. So, you have the authority to, it, never mind the zoning bylaw loophole, it doesn't exist. You can stop this. And as far as the, oh, or we'll destroy the land this way, if we can't destroy it that way, you know, I don't, I don't really cotton to that kind of attitude and statement to people who care enormously and know what goes on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't live in Ferring Hill, but I have been impacted by solar development. That's very concerning in my own area. So I've started to try to educate myself on the solar panels, and what we can do to protect the town in regards to this. So I know I only have three minutes. I have a lot of questions for Mr. Shanahan, if he could reply. But first, I want to address the board and their duty to ensure that there is adequate financial surety and the ability of the developer to meet the commitments under the zoning bylaw for solar site plan review by the bylaws of five-ninety, five-ninety-one, five-ninety-two, five-ninety-five point-one, et cetera. My first question is for Mr. Shanahan. In reviewing the public deeds Plymouth Registry, this property is leased under clean energy collect... Collective LLC. This is my understanding that this company is now bankrupt. Is that correct? And, Mr. Shanahan, what is your relationship to Clean Energy? My second question-
Would you mind if we do, if I let him respond one at a time?
If I have more than three minutes?
I stop your clock, all right?
Mr. Shanahan?
I find it much more-
You can sit there, because I have a lot of questions for you.
Sometimes we tend to lose the questions when we, when we-
Thank you.
All right?
Appreciate that.
I'll do my best, but they'll have to be through the chair, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
First issue, Clean Energy Collective, was a startup company, started in Colorado about six years ago. I was vice president of real estate permitting for CEC. Ultimately, CEC was acquired by Con Edison, which you've probably heard of, is about a twenty-five billion dollar company. Basically, what Con Edison did is what a lot of companies do when they acquire a company. They took the part that they wanted. Thankfully, part of that was my job, so I went to work for Con Edison. And they laid off approximately fifty-four people, kept fourteen, and what remained of CEC did, in fact, file for bankruptcy.
So, Mr. Shanahan, for the record, you are an employee of Con Edison?
I am an employee of Con Edison Clean Energy Businesses, yes.
And you are not an owner?
I wish I were an owner.
Okay. Okay. I guess this is for the owner of the property, or for the board, for that matter. There has been documentation on the registry that the property had transferred ownership just recently. It was, you know, during, doing research, it seems like there was not a clean deed in regards to this property. And I just wanna know what the board is gonna do to ensure that there's proper analysis done, that, you know, there is a clean deed and that these people actually do have a right to develop this land.
If I may, Ms. Chairman, she is correct, her research is accurate. The present landowners, which is Ninety-Six Realty Trust, Robert O'Hearn and Joseph Crespey, put this property under agreement. The title was not good. They spent a year and a half in the court system to clear the title. The title is now clear. We don't start permitting a project until we get a title insurance commitment from an appropriate title insurance company. We're very satisfied that the people with whom we have our option have good, clear, marketable title to this particular parcel.
Mr. Buckland, isn't it also the case that the application process vets that deed or that title status?
That is correct. They have to supply the deeds for the property and identify the property owner of the, in the record of the application.
Okay, so, that's really not what I asked. I mean, you can supply a deed, but that doesn't mean that the deed is clear. I mean, is there gonna be an analysis done to ensure by a professional appraised, you know, someone that's skilled in that, to make sure that that is accurate?
I would indicate, if I may, Ms. Buckland, the court process to clear title requires what they call the court-appointed commissioner to do the title examination and report to the court. When the commissioner's deed issued to Ninety-Six Realty, which is the new transaction you're talking about, that commissioner's deed endorsed by the court is evidence of the good, clear title that the grantee received in the parcel. It was a court process.
Has your question been answered?
Trust me, I'm not out there permitting a project on a piece of property that the landowner has no right to own.
Are you satisfied with that answer?
Do you have an agreement with this homeowner, as far as the contract?
It's not a homeowner, it's a landowner, and yes, we have a binding option to lease.
So, you don't have a lease agreement right now with him?
No, we have an option to exercise a lease if the project is permitted.
Okay, so you haven't taken any risk in regards to that yet?
Oh, yes, we've taken substantial risk.
I have you down to thirty seconds.
All righty. This is for the homeowner. There are a number of liens out on the Plymouth Registry of Deeds that this homeowner did not pay his taxes for approximately five years, until the lease agreement was signed with Clean Energy. So, I guess my comment is that, what is the planning board gonna do to ensure that once this, these solar panels are, you know, put in place, if they are put in place, that this homeowner, landowner, will pay his taxes going forward and that the town will receive any benefits? I mean, he's exhibited poor behavior, from what I can tell, on the deeds of registry. I don't wanna accuse anyone, but it's, it's public record, so he should address that with the planning board. Yes?
I would expect, personally, I'll try to respond, I would expect that all standard policies and procedures will be followed, just like if you didn't pay your taxes, or Mr. Rowley didn't pay his taxes, or I didn't pay my taxes.
Right.
I'm not gonna put special processes in place, I wouldn't anyway.
Don't you have fiduciary responsibility to ensure that with this type of development, that-
We have a whole system in our, in our government to do just that.
Okay.
But, Mr. Buckland, as part of the application, we get-
Correct.
Mr. Foster signs a certification-
The town treasurer signs the certification that they have paid up on their taxes.
So, we can't anticipate the future, but we have certified that all past taxes have been paid.
Okay.
Would you like one more minute?
Yes, please. So, we'll, you know, as far as a surety, that, you know, when these, when the poor homeowners, our basements are flooded, there were a lot of questions in regards to that. Is this planning board gonna expect a bond or some kind of financial upfront?
I think a lot of that will depend upon the results of the, of the data that we get from the appropriate experts. I think you heard tonight that this board has a lot of concerns that are very similar to the ones that you're outlining to us, especially around the water. And so, I, before I make any decision or any recommendation, or any member of this board would do the same, they're gonna wanna see this data and understand what the risk is. I don't wanna get ahead of the game.
Right.
You understand what I mean?
But it will be a substantial bond to ensure that when-
I don't know. I don't know that.
I don't know. Okay. Okay. And then, if for some reasons this project is abandoned, that, you know, Con Edison goes bankrupt, or whatever happens, are there gonna be outlines as to when this is in non-compliance? I mean, we have enough, you know, abandoned buildings around Wareham.
If I may, Ms. Chairman-
Please.
Under your local zoning, there is a requirement for what they call a decommissioning plan and a decommissioning surety. So, basically, the way it works is, we provide to the planning board, the town of Wareham, a decommissioning plan that indicates if, for instance, the site were abandoned or we ceased to operate for ninety consecutive days, we would basically lose our permit, and we would be required to remove the equipment from the site. Beyond that, however, we are required to boast the financial surety with the town, such that if we didn't do that, as we're supposed to do, the town would have the money upfront to go in and do it. And almost every municipality in the Commonwealth does exactly the same thing.
And there will be a timeline as far as that?
Yeah, yes.
Ninety days? If you are not in compliance?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna cut you off there. This public hearing will continue at the next meeting, and you, and you can come back at that point with the other questions. I might be in your best interest if you submitted them in advance and give us an opportunity to, for us to read them and Mr. Shanahan to respond to them. It might make it, it might make it more simple for you.
I absolutely will do that. Thank you so much for your time.
Next.
Leslie Edwards Davis, Trinity Lane. I'm not a neighbor or no butter, but I do care about the issue, and I just wanted to make a point about the vernal pools. So, this is just from a quick Google search on mass.gov from the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, their guidelines for the certification of vernal pool habitat, March two thousand nine. What are vernal pools? Vernal pools are temporary bodies of fresh water that provide important habitat for many vertebrate and invertebrate species. Vernal means spring, and indeed, many vernal pools are filled by spring rains and snow melt and then dry during the summer. However, and this is what's important, however, many vernal pools are filled by autumn rains, i.e. autumnal pools, and persist through the winter, and others are semi-permanent and do not dry every year. Vernal pools are quite often very small and shallow, and it goes on from there. But what I would suggest is, I've heard this in several solar situations recently, we did a study of vernal pools in the spring, which makes sense because vernal means spring, but it apparently doesn't make sense with how vernal pools behave. And so, I would suggest that we make sure that we are really adhering to the certification of vernal pools when we're looking to establish whether one is there or not. I do wanna say that I really appreciate the Zoom access. There is someone, at least one person with their hand up, who'd like to speak, but I do appreciate that you guys have been a leader on that issue in town, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckland, do we have a Zoom?
We have Lisa Morales online with her hand raised. Richard, does this count for the three-minute time?
Maybe not.
Andrew Forrest, Nineteen Cross Road, newest resident in the area.
Pull the mic in closer, will you? Thank you.
I don't wanna repeat what other people have said, however, if you take twenty-three acres of trees down, you're not gonna mitigate any water control on that. That's impossible. Second thing is, the problem with climate change is heat retention. Now you have twenty-three acres of black panels retaining heat, good twelve, sixteen hours a day, that's just gonna add to the environmental impact. My, my temperature in my land will eventually go up every day. I will not get the cool breezes, I'll get nice, warm, solar panel breezes. So, that's, and I believe this panel and the residents, at least the neighborhood residents, should have an environmental impact study done and submitted before anything, any further progress goes on, because this is, just seems like an environmental catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, Ken?
Do you think it's possible, Ken? I can't seem to get the audio to work on this. Continue, maybe? Continue?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone. I'll be very brief, I promise. I hate this sort of thing. I am in a butter. I'm at one sixteen Ferring Hill Road, so directly across the street from the nice wide buffer zone there. But also, I just wanted to go on public record saying that I do oppose this project, and I, my property would be, end up completely sandwiched between the two solar arrays. The solar array off of Squirrel Island is twenty feet behind me in my southern property line, and then this one would be, again, you know, however far that distance is there from the front of my property. And I know, you know, nothing has been brought up about the low-level EMFs that are emitted from the panels, and I know there's very mixed opinions on what that impact is, but it's something, you know, I have children, water, fortunately for me, isn't so much of an issue. I do have a sump pump, and if I need it, which I do on occasion, but I have one of the oldest houses there in that stretch, so folks probably put it on a little high spot. But again, thank you very much, everyone, and I just wanted to go on record saying that.
What was, what was your address?
It's one one six.
Ferring Hill Road?
Ferring Hill Road.
Anyone else? Hi, Nancy. I've been waiting.
Well, you know, I mean- Nancy McHale, Ferring Hill Road. I, since Mr. Shanahan called me out specifically, I figured I needed to get up and say something. And, and I will admit that, yes, Mr. Shanahan and I have spoken, thank you very much, and that he did indeed offer up about seven acres of wetland that is not developable. And I asked him specifically if he indeed had control over that parcel, that piece, because it was outside of the acreage that he had leased. So, if he doesn't have control over it, he didn't have the ability to offer it up. So, that didn't go any further. I would suggest to Mr. Shanahan that if the offer is sincere, and the owners are sincere with that, that they speak to the Conservation Commission. Because for the Wareham Land Trust to own another small piece of isolated wetland is going to be cost prohibitive to us, because for every piece of property that we own, it costs us about ten thousand dollars to do all of the insurances, the liabilities, the due diligence, the surveys, you name it, it's costs. But it could indeed connect to the Ferring Hill Conservation Land. So, that would be my suggestion, Mr. Shanahan. The other question I have in terms of mitigation, I'm happy to hear that there are conversation about mitigation. One of the things that could be a mitigating factor, there are some, in the subdivision plan by the cul-de-sac, there are some what look like developable lots on Ferring Hill Road. If those were also left as conserved, that may also be some sort of mitigation that would be acceptable to the Conservation Commission. But again, that's not my decision to make. The, let's see. I, I do agree that a hydrologist is absolutely needed in this case. I would, though, ask not that Mr. Shanahan hire the hydrologist, but that the concert, that the planning board hire them, so that it becomes your expert, not his expert. And you have, he would, again, pay for it, but that it was under your control. Okay. The soil compaction's gonna be made worse by the, by any of the movement of that. The archaeological survey could, would, should be done by Mass Historical, given the nature of the indigenous peoples in that area.
Would you like another minute?
I would love another minute.
Please.
Thank you. There was conversation earlier about where the sightlines were gonna be taken from, and I don't know if any of those sightlines were from the fair, actual Ferring Hill Conservation area. area. So that would be...
There was one, there was one line of sight that was going to travel across the Conservation...
I'm sorry, Mike, I can't hear you.
There was going to be one line of sight studied done across the Conservation Land.
Okay, thank you. And I haven't heard anything about an invasive species management plan, because herbicides and pesticides in that area are going to run off into the Conservation Land. So it's going to have to be done manually, in my opinion. So, I just wanted to put that out there as well, because it's, that's going to impact the Conservation Land. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanahan, did you want to respond, Annie? And I have a follow-up question.
Just a couple of points with regard to Ms. McHale and my conversation. I indicated that the land area that I was talking about is within our lease area. It's not within our project fence, if you will, but we will control it under the lease. I did indicate to her I would have, if she had an interest, we would have to explore it with the landowner, because we're leasing the land as opposed to buying the land. The other thing I would indicate is, now I've lost my thought, but the last issue she gave...
Endangered?
The endangered with the...
Invasive species, yeah.
Yeah, if, in fact, the board would like an invasive species management plan as part of the project, we can certainly put one together for you. I'd probably suggest we get further along in the proceedings, and if at that point the board thinks it's something worthwhile to do, we would do it at that point. I wouldn't want to do it at this point. I think clearly, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, those present this evening, while there are a number of concerns, and after doing 38 of these projects in Massachusetts, as you would imagine, the voices change, but the concerns are very much the same. The hydrogeology is the issue for this site and my focus going forward. The other issues will be addressed, but I think unless and until we can provide that information so that you can get your hands around it and Mr. Rowley can get comfortable with it.
To that end, I've been scouring our bylaws and looking in different areas on different things, and one of the common phrases that I find that, that I'm not sure 100% apply to our situation tonight, is this phrase, mutually agreed upon outside consultant or expert. And I would ask you, would you be willing to work with us to accomplish that, to Ms. McHale's point about having a mutually agreed upon expert come in? Let this board in this town understand who you want to bring in and let us have a say in that.
Absolutely, no problem. It does no good for me to hire somebody and you say, well, that's your doctor, but I want my doctor to review it.
So can we, we can assume that, at least for right now, from the hydrologist's perspective, that we will go through a process of choosing that together?
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, great.
I would certainly ask, and I expect that Mr. Rowley would be a part of that deliberation.
Are you comfortable with...
If you want me to. There are people out there that have that expertise to deal with soil situations and runoff. It's a highly specialized field to do that, but to the extent that I can be of support, I'll certainly do it.
Okay.
I can recommend some names as well.
All right.
Great.
So we'll, we'll get it done, all right?
You bet.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? How's your Zoom, Ken?
It's, it's not working very well.
So to Ms. Morales, I apologize. This board's trying very hard to keep the hybrid meetings working. We're failing tonight. We'll investigate why and hopefully have it corrected at our next meeting.
Excuse me? Can't you just call in and put her, and they put her on speakerphone?
Can you hear the lady?
Why don't you step up?
Can't a person just, if they can't work it through the Zoom, can't a person just call in and be put on speakerphone, and so that we could all hear them and they could participate?
That's one option, but we're not set up for a speakerphone at this time. I think...
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
We can have, we can have them contact us with information that can be supplied to the record, since we're going to continue the hearing anyway.
The hearing's not being closed.
I'm very, I'm very concerned about the logistics of opening up to that methodology. It's, I would rather not do it tonight. I would consider it, but it's scary.
Well, I think because the hearing's not being closed, there's, the sense of urgency isn't there. If we were planning on closing, it might be a different story.
I agree. So we're going to pass tonight, and we're going to give the IT department here a chance to figure out why it didn't work, but we'll have, I'm sure we'll have many more opportunities for input. Anyone else? With that, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing till, you said, August 9th?
9th.
9th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think we should have a note from the proponent as well, asking for the continuation to August 9th. It has to be mutually agreed on, so they have to supply requests for August 9th as well.
Mr. Shanahan, can you, I've seen, I've noticed this done, that you just drop a note to Mr. Buckland requesting a continuance to August 9th?
I don't, I don't mean to be obstructionist, I'd just like to know why. I know the board has to act within a certain period of time after the public hearing is closed, but I believe the board can continue the public hearing as frequently as necessary.
I'm not sure.
No, and special permit, it requires the agreement of the proponent as well. What we want to do is have you offer the continuation of the, of the hearing.
Again, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just wondering why you would need the proponent to request a continued public hearing. There's no deadlines.
Because of case law.
I'll give you the request and keep it simple, but I still would disagree with the rationale for it. I'll send it to you tomorrow, Ken.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need, we need to get this tight. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for a vote to continue the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved, 500. And we are done with that. Thank you.
To a date certain?
Pardon me?
The vote didn't include the date of August 9th? You just want to make that a date certain?
Um...
Can't continue it open? It did say August 9th?
It was the intent. I did mention that date at one time. I'm going to do it again, all right? I'm going to accept, I'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing until August 9th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Pass is 500. Public hearing, new 25-21 preliminary subdivision plan, 80 make peace at Zero Maple Springs Road.
That one is already, already decided on. It was left on the agenda from the last time.
Okay. I was wondering why it was there again. I thought, there, back again? That's like the third time. Okay. Any public comments tonight on our master plan, updates or new initiatives that wish to be shared by the public? Seeing none and hearing none, I'll go through the rest of the agenda. Any other business or discussion? Staff report? New business, I have one piece. I would like, I would like to add an agenda item next week to talk about member initiatives or changes that they would like this board to consider. I would like just to have a general discussion on that. I would like people to think about the topics that are near and dear to them, and I'd like you to think about maybe having a off-cycle workshop to execute that. We'll put in, we'll put a discussion item on the agenda for next week to that topic, if the board is in agreement.
Yep.
I'm seeing everyone's head nod.
Agreed.
So, pardon me?
I've got my list started.
Mr. Swenson, related to that, particularly as a new board member, I think there are some procedures, processes that the board follows that either may be in a lot of different places, or maybe not really documented. I don't, we have a, an idea of coming up with a procedure guide, or... I know that I discussed with you, we have, we have the rules and requirements, but I don't know if that that covers everything.
It doesn't. We have rules and regulations, we have the zoning bylaws, we have other regulations in place. We also have a master plan, yeah.
We have all the laws, but we, there's sort of an order of process.
We also have a permit guide as well, too, that walks people through the permitting There's also educational programs from the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative...
Which I'm trying to go through as well.
And I think that'll help you a lot in terms of the procedures and, and the regulations that apply to the work that you're doing on the board.
So start your list, and we'll, and we'll start talking about it. I've got my list started, and I know Sam has his started, okay? And Mr. Buckland always answers my questions, so he's a good resource as well.
Doesn't mean that that's right, though.
I was just going to say, he might be leading you down the rosy path.
I'm not commenting on that one. Any new business?
Don't forget the clerk.
Correspondence, future meeting is August 9th. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't forget the clerk.
Oh, Charlie had pointed out that 81A in the MGL says that we have to have a clerk. I want to go read that and...
Here you go.
Pardon me?
Here you go.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
They have to have a clerk tonight?
Such board shall elect annually a chairman and a clerk from among its own number, and may employ experts in clerical and other assistance.
I think Charlie's volunteering.
I make a motion that we defer action on the clerk until August 9th.
So, we'll, we're going to twist Mike Baptiste's arm and sign him up for the clerk job, because he won't have to do anything anyway.
I typed 30 words a minute with 40 mistakes.
Excellent, you're hired.
So we'll put it off for next week, all right?
Don't forget, you'll need to determine who's going to sign plans.
Yes.
How many years?
I'm going to sit one-on-one with...
Yeah, that letter needs to go to...
Registry of Deeds.
And the Land Court.
I want to sit one-on-one with you about that a little bit, all right?
Doug, you west K had me beaten, conservation.
Did I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.